We do have item four D from the consent agenda has been changed now to be part of our regular agenda. It's going to be line item seven H. With that said, can I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda and considered routine have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered normal sequence. Tonight we have the following: we have city council minister September twenty-third, twenty-nineteen, resolution approving dispersment through October fourteenth, twenty-nineteen, the polling place designation, and contract with southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. And then go ahead and get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make the comment will sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing a name and address. First person we have on the list is Mr. Scott Schleeter. Mr. Schleeter?
Council members, mayor, city administrator, citizens of Leesore, I'm Scott Schleeter, current vice chair of the planning commission. At our commission meeting last week, we reviewed the final zoning code, which you recently adapted, and after discussion, the commission determined that we are still missing a critical piece of the comprehensive plan, and we voted to recommend that the council have priority attention be paid to having a transportation plan and future land use plan. This is not an agenda item for this meeting, so it's not time for discussion or questions, but these plans are critical to future land use for the city, future street development plans, and the intention of current street usage. I just wanted to let the council know that the planning commission is making this recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Ed Vey, were you here to discuss something that's not on tonight's agenda?
I thought it was just a sign-in sheet. I didn't bring my glasses. You're doing a good job, by the way.
Did you have anything to say that had nothing to do with the Coventry or the delinquent accounts?
No. That's mine, too. So when it gets to me...
Dave Scheiber, Mr. Dave Scheiber, please approach the podium. He's going to talk to us about ethics tonight.
Gentlemen, thank you again for allowing me to come here tonight. I come here tonight questioning some things. One of the things I have understood recently is every one of you outside of maybe Mr. Krugel have taken an oath of office. Therefore, taking that oath of office, I believe there's some type of ethics. I'm here tonight because, some of you council members may know, I know there's two up there for sure that know what I'm speaking of. I'm talking about an unethical devious act upon me by some city staff. I encourage you all to do an investigation and bring disciplinary action against the two individuals. I do believe the city attorney also is bound by a high degree of ethics. There's a better place for attorneys. It's called the Minnesota Buyer Association. Again, gentlemen, I'm waiting. It's been six months since my order. You don't do nothing, then I have a very low opinion of you professional people. I would be glad to communicate with Leesore citizens so the next time we vote, we get some quality ethical people in here. By the way, Mayor, Mr. Hague, I had correspondence with the state attorney general's office on my matter. He designates you as the person to take deal with it. There's a lot of people right now in Leesore that are unhappy due to sidewalks, wanting to open up streets, other stuff. I see Leesore has become kind of a dictate town. I think we need to get back to Leesore that the citizens get what they want. If there's a group of people that live in a residence, they don't want a street opened up, I mean, you should listen to them. Don't just do what some people want to do. On another note, I wish to quick touch base. I've been informed that the city council does not oversee hires. I'd like to know why that is. Most counties I'm familiar with, the city council and the mayor oversee the new hires. And again, I think that's something, if it's not on the policy, it should be added to the policy. And I feel there should be some type of point system within the citizens of Leesore where Leesore people come first for city employment, rather than people from outside of town. Thank you for your time, and I do really hope you will do my investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and as you stated, Mr. Scheiber, is there something you have to pass on to me from the attorney general's office?
No, I have the material at hand. He states that you are the one to deal with the situation. If you do not deal with the situation, vote him out.
Thank you. Next person we have on here is Mr. Ryan Moreau. Clarification request?
Yeah. Is this for questions that deal with the things that are on the agenda?
This has to do with anything, anything other than what's on the agenda, so if it has anything to do with the Coventry situation or anything associated with the 112 Turnback Project or the delinquent utility bills, we'll be dealing with both of those items in our public hearing shortly after we come in.
Okay, because I answered yes and yes to both your questions, so then now is not time to ask the question.
That's correct.
I mean, it was written there.
Okay. Next person we have on here is Ms. Wendy Smith.
Nope. We're just here for...
Were you just here to...
Observe.
Well, we'd like to go ahead and welcome not only you, but also a member of our scouts. Next person is Mr. and Mrs. Joanne Barb Hicks.
I thought it was a sign and she'd also...
You might want to say this is not a sign and she...
And then we have Mr. Lyle Olson for Coventry.
Yep.
Next one is Patrick West for Agrippa.
Yeah, for Turnback.
Turnback, okay. Joanna Smith is Coventry. Kathleen Lustke for the sewer letter notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on up to the podium.
Hi, everybody. A lot of you heard from me, long-winded on the messages. Thank you. I'm here to say thank you for your action. Sean Kirby volunteered to come down with fans and help my mom clean the sewage, the sewer water that came up through her toilets and blew out all over her floors. And me, too, but I had already got mine because it was a little worse.
Your mother's in Sweetheart.
Yeah. But, and Jasper, and Mayor, and Marvin, everybody, thank you so much for your listening and getting on it. But I want it documented, or I want it to be known, or whatever process happens here, that in the future, every residence will get some form of notification. Because that's a, I caught my neighbor walking down the street that evening, and I said, "Ann, did you have any sewer issues at your house?" And she goes, "No." And then she goes, "Well, wait a minute. There was water all over my bathroom." And I said, "That came from your toilet, so, yeah." She goes, "I just wiped it up," but she goes, "Oh, now I know what I'm going to be doing today." That's a public health hazard, sewer water soaking inside of the two-by-fours in her basement. She had two inches of water. And so the seriousness of it, you guys all jumped on it and got the flyers out and put them on the doors because it didn't come in the newsletter or it didn't come, but some formal way to notify people that this is a potential, this could happen again, and it should never happen again. I just had neck surgery and I had to scramble all over my bathroom to clean it because mine actually had stuff in it, not just clear water. So, please, I beg you, Jasper got right on it. They had flyers printed off for our end of town. And the other thing I'd like to notice, I normally have five minutes, but when I called the sewer department, right away, the answer was, "Your vents are clogged." And when we talked to the man operating the sewer, the machine, he said older homes were built with a different code, and your sewer vents aren't plugged, they're just smaller. Newer homes don't have this issue because their code changed and they're bigger. So, the poor end of town, guilty, has smaller vents, and so that's a possibility. And he said the roots were so bad that they had to use higher pressure. Nevertheless, it was a horrible, horrible, horrible day. You're just lucky you didn't return my call. We're not threatening anyone. But thank you to Sean, and Jasper, and Mayor Hague, and all you guys for your prompt getting on it because, and listening, and not just blowing smoke, because that's always the worst of the worst, so, thank you. And, I don't know, but is there a chance that we could get it printed where the sewer jetting is going to be in the monthly newsletter that comes directly to our homes? Or even like, I got two notices for my meter sent directly to my address. You know, I don't know if like, if I was a landlord and I paid all the city utility bills, would my residences still get a notice? You know, things like that, so that every single person with a bathroom doesn't have to deal with this. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of all of us from city government as well as staff, we do apologize to anybody that was affected by this situation, and since we were notified, we took the appropriate actions, and I think we've made some corrective measures.
Yeah.
So thank you again for bringing it to our attention, and we are truly sorry for the inconvenience that it's caused. Next person on the docket is Leroy May for First Leesore Church.
That's the Turnback, the Turnback project?
Turnback, okay. Mr. Dean Williams for...
Yeah, because Mr. Leroy May told me to sign in.
Okay. Okay, we see that Mr. Daryl Holden's for the Coventry Road. Is that Terry and Colleen Johnson? That is...
Thank you. Thank you for calling us, and first, I kind of made a mistake and signed in to the thoughts we're supposed to do. But we did have two questions for you. One is, we live over on Bridge Street, and we noticed that there's, we're guess we're wondering about the noise ordinance. I realize that Bridge Street is a very busy street, and as it is, you get trucks and you get some ice and cars, a lot of people going through this, the state highway. But there's, we've noticed an increase in vehicles going up and down the road right now with probably like no mufflers and just really, just really loud. We're noticing things like the house starts to vibrate when they're going by the level of whatever it is on their muffler that isn't working. So that, we were wondering about what the noise ordinance on that was. And then the other question, we were getting letters for a while on the water main things and telling this insurance company who wants us to sign up for the water main thing, and I've sent it back three times declining because I already have that insurance. I got another letter today. How do I make them stop?
Thank you, ma'am. And last person on here, looks like Darnell Loveloo on the Coventry Road situation. Okay, with that said, is there anybody else that is in attendance wish to go ahead and address city council on things that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public comment?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move on to six alpha, which is public hearing for county-state aid highway twenty-two improvement hearing, city administrative approval.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, tonight is the notice public hearing for the CASA twenty-two improvement hearing. Started substituting the CASA for the lieu of the trunk highway one-twelve since that's officially the name of the road now. But what we're going to do, we're going to present, staff is going to present just about the project, the improvement, kind of the process, some of the things related to the Coventry Road intersection, the speed analysis that was done, and a bunch of other things that are included in the packet. After that, the mayor and city council will open up public comment, will record the public comment, and then after that, we'll close the public comment. So, it'll be myself and city engineer Corey Beanfang that will be presenting, will kind of be teaming it, going back and forth. But in general, you can see the area of the improvement, I hope, on here, and it's a very substantial part of the road, of the road network in Leesore. In general, this is CASA twenty-two, it's formerly trunk highway one-twelve. This project is three-point-five miles of roadway that will be replaced over a two-year period of time, so twenty-twenty into twenty-twenty-one. This does affect thirty intersections in town, so just trying to show the scope of this. This is a large project. It'll be, it's, well, it's needed in the community, but it will also be disruptive when this is actually happening. The total project cost is thirteen million dollars. Six-point-five million of that will be funded locally. And this, because we're holding this improvement hearing, this is part of the chapter four-twenty-nine process that allows the city to levy assessments per the assessment policy that we have and that state statute. We have had four open house events to date, one of those being one that was specific to the south industrial area of that, just north of County Road one-fifteen. And again, this whole project, this thirteen million dollars will be financed through county funds, which those county funds are generated through the turnback process, so they originated from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Local funds, that means property taxes. Utility funds, that means part of your utility bills are used for these types of things, and then special assessments that are levied through this process. So, again, to reiterate, we're holding a public hearing. We'll have a presentation by myself and Corey. We will record the public comments on the improvement. We'll close the public comment, and then we will request additional information, that, request for additional information from city council are conveyed to staff so that on October twenty-eighth, there will actually be a resolution that orders the improvement and orders the plans and specs for the project. So with that, we have our city engineer Corey Beanfang here. He'll talk a little bit about the four-twenty-nine process, and then we have a nice video to show about basically what's underneath your street.
City engineer Ben Fang, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Engineer Council. So as Jasper did, he did a good job summarizing, so, chapter four-twenty-nine is the state statute that gives authority to cities to levy collect special assessments for local improvement projects and for city policies that are intended to assess as part of this project. There's two real main touch base points where public input is gathered, the first being tonight, which is a public improvement hearing. And the primary intent of that is to allow for comment and feedback on the improvement area, which we have talked at length about, and is being primarily driven based on the turnback, the proposed county improvement of one-twelve. Initially, there are some areas outside of CASA twenty-two or one-twelve that we talked about, primarily being Farady Street, but that is really the intent of this improvement hearing, is to set that area. And then as Jasper indicated, the outcome of this hearing is that resolution, and that really sets the project process to continue to move forward. The creation of the plans and specs moving forward to the bidding process and ultimate construction. And then regarding the four-twenty-nine, the other touch base point where public comment is gathered is the assessment hearing. And we've talked about that, the way that the policy is structured in Leesore, there's a benefit appraisal. Those are in the process of being completed, expected for early twenty-twenty. So it'd be after that, then we would reconvene, have another hearing that'd be related specifically to the amounts of those assessments. So really what you're doing with this improvement hearing is setting the area to be assessed, and then we reconvene to set the actual dollar amount for those assessments. Just a little synopsis of the four-twenty-nine. A lot of times we have that graphic, what's on your street, and a lot of folks don't understand. We talked at length about improvement hearing, street utilities, what does exactly that mean? And so, got just a quick little minute to add to here of truly what we're going to be improving with this.
We drive on roads and walk on sidewalks every day, but do you really know what's under your street? Let's take a journey below the surface. Clean water leaves the water treatment plant and is pumped through the water main to hydrants and into properties. Shut-off valves allow the city to turn off water to individual houses for repairs or to isolate leaks. Once water is used in the house, it travels through the sanitary sewer system to the wastewater treatment plant, where it is cleaned and returned to the environment. Manholes and sanitary service cleanouts are used to access the system for cleaning and inspection. The storm sewer drains rainwater from the street surface, collects it in catch basins, and pipes it to manholes where it is carried to a lake or river. In some areas, houses have some pumps in their lowest level where water is pumped out to the storm sewer system. Roads are made up of three layers. Some streets contain a curb and gutter carrying rainwater to catch basins and acting as a barrier between vehicles and pedestrians. Curb and gutter, boulevards, and sidewalks all fall within the public right-of-way, so they can be accessed and repaired if needed. Private utilities are generally placed in the boulevard or under the sidewalk.
Next, I'm going to go through some questions that I've received from city council members, and there's been input from our city engineer on some of these as well, so I'll just kind of go through these one by one and answer them briefly. What is the new number that should be used for this road? So the new road will be called CASA twenty-two, that is formerly known as trunk highway one-twelve. CASA stands for County State Highway. It's a designation at the county level for what type of road it actually is. The second question that I fielded, that was fielded, is could the intersection of Coventry Road and Elmwood Avenue be a right-in, right-out configuration? Corey will touch on this a little bit and some of the sightline analysis that was conducted, but in general, it would be difficult to put that type of configuration in. We have talked to the county, Leesore County, about this, as that this is their role. They would have to ultimately sign off on something like that. And in summary, that intersection would not meet the needs, or that wouldn't meet the needs of that intersection to put in a right-in and a right-out. And the county would be, I believe, Corey, you could confirm this, they wouldn't be in support of something like this, and they ultimately have the jurisdiction. Question three, could the speed limit on Elmwood Avenue or CASA twenty-two be reduced to thirty mile an hour at County Road one-fifteen? So County Road one-fifteen is the road that goes east and west, kind of by hometown bioenergy. That will be addressed. We will have something in there in the speed analysis that we have about what we think might be an actual configurable speed limit designation for that road based on some of the speed study results that we have from the current conditions. Wanting to note that there will be a preemptive speed study done after the construction project's completed, and at that time, we'll have better, I think the conditions will be better because that the detour that goes to the center right now will be open. The road will be functioning fully as it's intended. So, right now, you know, that road's obviously closed. That was discussed a couple meetings ago. So, question number four, can we get a dynamic, get a dynamic speed signs on the road? Yes, that is possible, and that is what's going to be recommended by the city of Leesore, and it will be incorporated into the project. Question five, will there be sidewalks trail on both sides of CASA twenty-two at the Coventry Road Elmwood intersection? That is correct. There will be trail on the east side that will be an eight-foot batuminus or asphalt trail paved on the east side, or on the west side, it'll be a five-foot concrete block. Question number six, if there were to be a turnaround at the end of Coventry Road, what would that involve? Corey can touch on this a little bit more, but essentially, to have a turnaround, we would need it to be a cul-de-sac or what's called a hammerhead, and it would be very difficult to do with the existing right-of-way that we have right now. Question number seven, what is the opinion of our city engineer and perhaps other traffic experts related to the slope of Coventry Road as it approaches CASA twenty-two? There's a pretty extensive analysis of that done in the sightline section of the packet. Corey will touch base on that in detail when we get to that section. The next question, could there be devices placed at the intersection of Coventry Road and CASA twenty-two that would allow emergency vehicles to leave but prohibit regular vehicles from entering? There will be, there's a section in the memo included in the packet that looks at a lot of these different types of intersection control devices. This has been talked about with the county. Again, something like that would be not recommended by the county. Corey can touch base on that a little bit more when he gets to that section of the presentation. The next question, if we open the Coventry Road and CASA twenty-two intersection, and the intersection has safety concerns by city council, can we close it? The answer to that is yes. We control the jurisdiction of Coventry Road. We could close that road at the edge of the right-of-way between city and county right-of-way. Right now, if you're familiar with the area, the barricades that are out there are actually in county right-of-way. In order for us to close it and have control over it, that would then have to be pushed back further to the east, probably about ten feet or twelve feet. And the last question, can the grade of Coventry Road as it approaches CASA twenty-two be adjusted to be lower than the current conditions? Corey will touch base on this with some of the sightline stuff, but in summary, the slope is around five-point-five percent. It meets what the engineering standards are. In order to lower it to a slope that's less than five-point-five percent, there would have to be some pretty substantial investment in pavement modification, curb gutter, to reduce that slope at a large cost. It's something that we can look at, but it may be cost prohibitive. So those are the basic questions that I've received. With that, I'll turn it over to Corey. He'll start about, we'll kind of go through each section of the report that's in the packet, and we'll give some information about some of this data. So, I'll turn it over to Corey.
All right. Thank you, Jasper. So specifically first is to the speed study. I believe a couple meetings ago, or certainly a few months ago, there was a request and a discussion between county and city that there was benefit in collecting an existing speed data, existing speed data on Elmwood. And it was decided that that was a worthwhile venture, and there was proposed to be three locations of speed data collected, essentially at the three speed limit changes. And at the time of implementation, which was in September, we waited till after school started, we collected the data, then we installed three tubes. So it's a series of tubes, two tubes in series at each of three locations, and collected that for a period of a week, a weekday, and then through the weekend, to make sure that we had that data set for both the weekdays and the weekends, and then we did days and nights. nights. When we scanned time to collect and analyze that speed data, unfortunately found that two of the locations had compromises. The very southern location, the 55 mile an hour location, we had issues with the equipment, so it was recording some faulty speeds. Most notably, that location was going to be impacted because of the detouring of 112. So, you know, understandably, probably not of super great value. The 50 mile an hour speed zone, that was indicated, or that we had an issue with one of the tubes, they lost its contact. A single tube works well for data count as far as just numbers of vehicles, but in order to collect speed, you need both tubes. The tube set that did maintain integrity and that we got worthwhile data from was the northernmost set analyzing 30 mile an hour zone between Caucas and Turtle. So arguably then, we proceeded with the analysis of that third and complete data set. And what we were able to deduce from that is the speed characteristics through that time, southbound was exactly as expected and as posted. One of the things we looked for is this 85 percentile, that means exactly that, that's the 85% of the time, that's what the folks are traveling on the roadway, arguably less and more within that, but that's your 85 percentile. So for southbound, it's right as posted, 31 miles an hour, leaving town or heading south in Elmwood. For the northbound direction, I think again, it was certainly as been communicated that folks are traveling greater than the posted speed, I think we validated that with an 85 percentile of 40 miles an hour. So in a sense, those folks are traveling, you know, 85% of the time, 10 miles over speed limit. So based on this, you know, one of the things to note that this is an existing speed zone, and we talked about, you know, what the effect of that is, it certainly has no bearing on, you know, the project pre-construction, you know, arguably we're making improvements, and what we're going to most be concerned about is the speed travels after the improvement. We've talked about that process, we would replicate this speed study, certainly with a little more care, or we would repeat if there was issues with the data set, to understand what the as-built speeds are traveling. But for the existing, I think it was powerful to validate some of the assumptions that we're making in analysis, most notably the Coventry, reconfirming those design assumptions that, you know, we are designing for greater speed than just posted, because that's actually what folks are traveling, and making sure that we're accounting for that gap there, that additional 10 miles per hour. As far as recommendations go, or at least perceived recommendations, it's notable that that 30 mile an hour isn't doing its job to identify and to, you know, have motors adhere to it. So I think there's some advanced warning sign that we can do to better, you know, 30 mile an hour zone ahead, you see those often on rural communities, or, you know, decrease the zone, decrease the speed zones, identifying those. I think we will look at that certainly for northbound. To speak to one of the questions regarding the dynamic speed signs, I think this is a great application for that, powers available in this area, and we do have county support to install that for this 30 mile an hour zone on Elmwood. And then to speak to the speed limit changes, one of the questions was, you know, what would be the probability of 30 mile an hour all the way out to 115? I think that's very low, certainly with the results of the speed data, even that one data set, notably, you know, a half mile north of 115, we're traveling at 40. So I think the probability of bringing that all the way to the south reaches the city limits is very low. But I'd be hopeful in this that we're able to look at that 50 mile an hour zone pretty strategically, and maybe have a transitional, say 45 mile an hour zone, to start to hopefully bring that slowdown a little bit further south of town. So I think that would be, that was the better one there, I kind of went out of sequence. But I think those are the outcomes, certainly understand what folks are traveling today, and then a little view into maybe what the recommendations would be, or what we hope them to be in the as-built or after the improvement. So then with the, with the understanding of the speed data, and then directly taking that over to the analysis of Coventry, and really, you know, piggybacking on the presentation analysis that took place in July. When we look at the, an intersection as proposed here for Coventry, it's going to be a minor leg stop onto a major highway. There's a series of sightlines that you analyze or assess for determining if there's sufficient sight for a vehicle on Coventry to make a move onto Elmwood. And there's guidance both at the mid-dot level as well as American Association of Transportation Officials, ASHTO, that dictate standards for those requirements, minimum sightline distance requirements for intersections. This is a reiteration of that table, this is setting those speeds that we're going to be analyzing for those sight distances, 30 and 40. There's two main decision points when you're leaving a minor onto a major, there's the left turn from stop, and I should preface, you know, with Coventry obviously being a T-intersection, you know, we're just analyzing the leg of Coventry then. There's the left turn through stop, that's where you're actually crossing traffic and then, you know, re-entering then to, in this case, had whether it be southbound. There's a decision gap or sight distance that is required to clear traffic that are coming into town from your left, as well as getting in line and merging with traffic approaching from your right. And then similarly, there's the case of the right turn from stop. Here, you're not crossing traffic, you're just entering the stream of traffic, so you just need that clearance or that decision site to the left. So again, to speak to these standards, there's standards between Midot and Ashville, and then it's directly correlating to that speed, and that speed of travel is that perceived vehicle on Elmwood, that vehicle that you're interacting with. Here you'll notice, is this the first table, it's the left turn from stop, then you have the left and the right side of that table, the distance to the left that you need to clear, and then that distance to the right. And I think what's important to note here, and as the memo speaks to, we meet all the distances that are indicated as the standard for that.
If I may, I just want to make sure to reiterate that this is, this analysis is done of the conditions after construction, not the current conditions. So this is, this is what we would be meeting after the construction would occur.
Appreciate that. So then, table three is the right turn from stop, it's a little narrower and not as big because you just need to clear that left, that left decision point. And here, notably, again analyzing the two standards, analyzing the two speeds, and the conclusion to take away is that we're meeting that standard, or meeting all those standards. So then, beyond the decision points of the actual left and the rights, the decision of the Coventry and the ability for that Coventry driver to perceive and react, you also have the folks traveling on Elmwood, and the driver that's interacting with that car that's entering Elmwood from Coventry. And the standard that we analyze for that is required stopping sight distance, that's the ability of the Elmwood driver to react to the Coventry driver, say, if he didn't clearly lay it fully or stalled, and that standard there is a stopping sight distance. And here we have both directions of Elmwood, again, the two standards, and again analyzing for the two speeds, the 30 and the 40, the takeaway here is that we meet all standards for that. And then the last piece is the required stopping sight distance for Coventry, this got raised, the profile Coventry arguably is unagreed, has a notable crest hill, where as you're approaching Coventry, you're at a rise and then downgrading. And one of the things that we wanted to analyze and make sure we're counting for is the decision point to be able to assess the stop sign and make an appropriate stop. Similarly, if there's a car waiting at the stop sign, something of that nature, so folks on Coventry can perceive the stop condition and obviously yield before entering Elmwood. And here, notably, you still have the one direction travel, Coventry westbound, Midot doesn't sight, they default to Ashville here, you have the one speed, 30 mile an hour, and the takeaway is that we exceed that standard. So the conclusion of all this, and it is consistent to what we found in July, is that based on the existing speeds traveled for the roadway, which are what we have available to us for the 30 mile an hour posted, and the concluded additional speed traveled, Coventry meets all standards for sight and stopping to be, you know, serviced as a through-stop So again, the recommendation, at least based on our analysis on the standards, is part of this improvement would be to open that Coventry access at 112. We believe by the adherence and the meeting of all the standards, it will operate and function as a safe intersection. To address the speeding traffic on northbound 112, obviously we don't particularly want folks traveling 10 miles beyond the posted speed, this is that considered, that same consideration or recommendation that we would hope to move forward from with this improvement to accommodate that northbound speeding traffic, and that's consistent to what I spoke to on the speed study. Being strategic with that advanced warning sign for the 30, hopefully having a better transitional zone of a 45 instead of a 50, and then that speed to have extra awareness for those folks then that are entering that 30 mile an hour zone. I believe through the discussion back in July, there is, you know, there is a request or some discussion on feasibility of how there's some alternative access configurations, one being the right-in, the right-out, one, another, you know, and multiple here identified within the memo is, or within the packet, is are there other configurations that would restrict access to the general user but allow and accommodate for more of an emergency to, you know, speak to that, that response time argument? And I think there are, there are a number of options that are available as far as feasibility of, you know, something being manufactured that can be implemented. I'd say most notably, you see these frequent for, you know, homeowners associations or gated communities, things of that nature. I think they could be applied here, you know, the function and how effective they are, I guess I'd have a difficulty speaking to because you don't see this frequent from a county road to a local city street. I think it's something more of nature where you're leaving a local roadway onto more of a private network. But the technology's certainly out there, and I think, you know, it could be fitted, but it's not a recommendation because of the meeting of the standard for a three-step intersection to pursue something of this nature.
So that's it for our presentation about just kind of a summary of the project and some of the things that have been included in the packet. Now I'll turn it over to city council and the mayor, if there are any questions, I notice the mayor may have a question. Now's the time to ask, otherwise it's, you know, like a public hearing, and allow that process to take place.
The CASA 22 speed data memo and information. We've indicated that, figure would indicate, so we're currently doing 50 miles an hour, and the proposal is to go to 45, which would just be just before Polar Street. My question is, could that be changed to 40 miles an hour?
I think the question certainly can be posed, and to speak to that process again, so the way that a formal speed study would progress is, we talked last week about, a formal speed study on Midot or county roadways is facilitated by Midot, they're the ultimate authority when it comes to setting speeds. So I think our approach to further and move forward on the speed, certainly on Elmwood, would be we would, we complete the improvement, I think that improvement would be completed in full, and we facilitate another internal speed study. Obviously, with more effective results this time, but that would be for our, for our ability to review and understand how the new as-built roadway is functioning. Based on that, that's going to directly then direct and parallel into what is the potential for speed changes on Elmwood. If we're comfortable with the results, and the results are leading us to a direction that we'd like to, arguably lower speeds on Elmwood, then we'd make that official request to Midot. They would replicate or redo their own speed study, and hopefully with intent to validate what we already know, and then move forward accordingly. So there is some, there's some backstories, I think certainly when you communicate with Midot, you have some intent and some justification why you're asking for a speed study, but just to hand-select that speed, it's not set that way. So I think you can, you can certainly identify and, again, communicate to Midot the concern and the lacking of the hearings to the 30, and notably, the 50 to 30 is a greater speed change, and you would normally like, you know, normally like a 10 or 15 mile step down. So I think some of those intents can be communicated, Mr. Mayor, but you just can't set speeds as desired.
Well, I'm thinking that when we have 85 percentile going 10 miles an hour faster at that point, I think that's good justification to the county and to Midot.
Understood.
For the 40 miles an hour.
Sure.
Other members of city council? Council members?
Based on the speed study, I'm also looking at even the speed trailer that was put up. The speed trailer showed almost identical to what was being said. And I know that it was being judged, that there was this thought, and it's a person's perception of how fast a vehicle is going, but I think the average person can take a look at what it takes to clear from point A to point B, and see one car do it, see another car go faster, you can tell that the other car is going faster, so they're not out of their minds. I wasn't out of my mind, I went right there too. It's obvious that people are speeding on the streets. It's not just on 112, it's all over the city. I think that the, that the trailer is a good, a good way for us to judge, to be able to put them on the streets in different places and use them more often than what they are. If nothing else, maybe we can get a better awareness of a, of a social issue which has to do with speeding in this town. Now, we've had to, a number of times at city council, a number of us have brought up things like watching out for the pedestrians that they're not watching, watching out for the buses because they're going around them. There's a bit of a lackadaisical aspect about disobeying the law when it comes to traffic in this town. And I know that that's a problem in small cities and towns all over the place, but we're not, we're not crazy, it's real. Question I asked, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, will there be a light at the intersection, the proposed aspect for Coventry and 112, or THA 22?
I can answer that, so I'll add something too. So with that eight-foot trail, there will be pedestrian lighting along that trail, that's something that we get a lot of requests for, the Kingsway Trail is some lighting so people can use it at night and feel safe. So on top of the pedestrian lighting, there is a proposed intersection light at that intersection as well.
All right, and then the last question I had with this, we're focusing on one area, and I had an individual that asked me about the sidewalks on areas that are outside of where the trail is. Okay, so if you're looking at some of the other places that sidewalks you do that don't have or they're replacing, they want to make sure that that's still falling in line with the policy, that is not an assessment situation, and that's going to be handled by the city.
That is correct. So the current assessment policy for sidewalks is that we don't assess our sidewalks. The benefit appraisal doesn't take into account those types of things anyway, it's really just looking at the type of property it is, if it's a single-family home or an apartment complex, it looks at what the zoning is, and it tries to find comparable properties. And it's, and just so everybody knows, the benefit is just the land value, so it doesn't have any, there's no bearing of what's on the property, it's just the increase that the praiser can prove of the land value itself. So it doesn't take into account the sidewalk, but for sidewalk-specific projects, there are no assessments.
Anybody else? Want to take a motion to open the public hearing?
So will.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We opposed, motion is carried. First person on the list, Joanne Smith, Coventry Openings.
Hi, I'm Joanne Smith. I live on one fifty-eight Coventry Road. My house is the one that's at the very end, and when you look at the map, my driveway is right there, right on the very end there. So I have a lot of concerns about safety because when we have widened this road, as far as I think, it's about thirty feet from the end of my driveway to the new part of where the road is going to be, which falls into line. I realize that that is allowable to do that. Just because something can be done, should be done, I think that's what we need to look at. If I back out of my driveway, there is really no way if someone is coming down at forty miles an hour and is going to turn into Coventry that I would ever see that person with that limited amount of space between my driveway and the road. And so that is my biggest concern. It's, you know, I have gotten children that I watch frequently. I have them in the car frequently, and so it's not just my safety, but my grandchildren also. So that's probably my biggest concern, and you know, when I think of, right now, it's beautiful weather and you can see everything really well. We get snow and the snow piles up as it did last year. And the snow piles start plowing that, the visibility is going to be less at that point. And so, and there's not going to be much place for the snow to go. It's going to be right up next to my driveway once they plow. And so I just am very, very concerned about the safety of myself, my grandchildren, and the other people that live on that street. Like I said, and I understand perfectly that this can be done. I think at this point now is the City Council's decision. Shouldn't be done. Is this the safe thing to do? The people on the street do not want it done for a variety of different reasons. And I'm not going to speak on what other people are saying or thinking. But I just think that it's really important that we really look at this as, you know, how important is this? I understand the emergency vehicles would like to get through that way. I understand that perfectly. I've lived there for a very long time, almost thirty years. People get to me when I need them. I've never had that issue. I don't think that adding that extra minute or so that it takes to come around to get to my house for me is, it's more important that I'm safe every single day as I'm driving my car or my grandchildren are playing in my driveway. And so I just want you to kind of think about that and to, again, just because it can be done, is it the right thing to do? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Patrick West, I'm Mike Bastian. Do you want to just speak now, sir?
Nope, I got it. Thank you.
Mr. Leroy May?
You know, what I have to ask?
Get to the podium, please. We want to make sure that we hear you so that our city clerk...
Well, I'm here just for information is all there for, and I don't want to waste the council's time on my questions because I didn't quite realize, my issues are pretty small compared to what these other folks are. I can ask them questions from the city engineer or whatever and they'll get my answers there, so. I don't want to waste your time because it's trivial, so.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Mr. Dean Williams?
Don't forget this time, Mark.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Daryl Golden? Good evening, Mr. Golden. How are you tonight, sir?
Mayor, a pleasure. Thank you for asking. City Council, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Daryl Golden, a resident of Coventry Road. And I'm assuming all of you have read the letter that I've sent two weeks ago, so I'm not going to reiterate much of that. But I guess just, we have a public forum here tonight. I guess, I just want to bring it to note that a year and a half ago, when this first project, project was first brought up, I went to that meeting at the fire hall and there's no plan to open Coventry Road. A year later, there's a plan to open Coventry Road. And I don't know how this happened. And the other thing that I wanted to state is that, you know, there's a petition that's going around and there's a significant number of people in our area on Coventry Road, a big percentage have signed for a petition, eighty percent suggesting it should not be opened. And I've talked to numerous people downtown that don't even live in my area, and they're saying, why aren't the City Council considering opening this? And I guess I'm really asking that question too. And I think there's some serious concerns, no concerns from Corey, and I understand what he's getting at. On a perfect day, in the middle of the summer and probably nine months of the year, you're going to have a beautiful road there. And I'm all for the project itself of opening up the CSH AH twenty-two. I think it's going to be a wonderful project. There won't be a problem with that. But the sideline issue that Corey brings on Coventry Road, I don't know where he's, they have three hundred and eighteen feet is a safe distance for people to see. I don't know if that's to see the highway, but at three hundred and twenty-five feet, sitting in your car, you cannot see, you can see a stop sign down there eventually, but you cannot see the road. I don't know where he's measuring from. But I just think you're looking in the middle of the winter, you're looking at some serious problems, and they were addressed in my letter there. And when we had the last City Council meeting, the county, the city attorney made a quite an issue about claws getting, fire trucks and ambulants getting stuck if they came down to our street. On a given winter day, when it's the right conditions and slippery, there isn't a fire truck or an ambulance that's going to make it up that hill, number one, because they can't get up there. If you turn the corner slow, without four-wheel drive, you're not going to get up that hill. I've seen that happen with the garbage trucks and any number of things. They won't get up the hill. And I'm just afraid people are going to slide into that road. And when we talked at that last meeting, there was quite a discussion about the city, from the city attorney, that the, we would get sued, but if the city would get sued if a fire truck or an ambulance got stuck on the road. And it's what that letter that I pointed out. When there's an accident on that intersection down there, you're going to have bigger problems than you've ever had before with a fire truck getting stuck on a given street. And I just think that it's one of those things that, I don't know how it ever got decided over. I've never heard one person give me a straight answer on that, why that was even decided. But that road can be left closed and you can do a beautiful job of making it a pedestrian path going up our street. I don't care who walks on the street or rides bikes and all that kind of thing, but I think you're just looking at problems here. And I know there's maybe one or two people that have voiced their opinions against this, but there's many people that are saying no. So I don't know what's guiding the decision here, so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is it Danelle W. view? Is that correct?
Well, it's probably Daryl Lawrence. He had to leave, so I'll take mine since you're going up the list backwards.
Yeah, you're next.
I have kids to get to, so I'm sorry. I just need to get this off my chest and move on with life. Many of you have heard from me before. My name's Kanashis. I live on one forty-one Coventry Road. I want to talk back to this on the MINDOT. It was the last thing I was going to discuss. I called MINDOT. They looked at the same information. There is no way MINDOT would ever sign off to move that, where if they have the forty-five mile an hour zone. They already said no. They would never suggest that. Where it's thirty miles an hour, they would actually go up to forty, if not forty-five miles an hour, until you get down to the bottom at Elmwood Circle is when they would drop it to thirty. That was what Scott Thompson with MINDOT, Area Seven, engineer, told me after I got this packet and I called him. He pulled it up. He looked at it. He said absolutely not. Public information. I called, I asked. That's what I was told. Number two, it's not a liability for the city to decide to open the road or to keep it closed. There's many case laws that is referenced that would hold the city bolt and make everybody harmless identified from it. I have the list of the sidewalk. If you guys want it, I would gladly email it all to you. I'm not going to read through it. Number two, earlier it was addressed that it was rural, we're a rural community. Well, we're not rural anymore after this project. We're going urban because of our curb and gutter. Okay? And it's like Joanne said, that line is just not there. My question is, is who is plowing the roads or for the sidewalk, the eight-foot? Who is going to plow that? Number two, I don't think that we've got any straight answers from anybody regarding this project. It was emergency personnel first, and then we came up with insurance reasons now. And then it was, you know, we were in violation of state fire natural code. You know, we proved it all wrong. Whether it was the process and way it came out, we felt like we were lied to and deceiveded for the reasons in the driving of opening Coventry Road. I would like to propose that Coventry Road remain closed until Coventry Road is resurfaced. And then let's talk about it. It's not going to cost you any more. It's not going to cost you any less. Because the fact of the matter is, is you're already repaving entrances into all the other businesses and you're already making that design. You're already putting in your sidewalk. So leaving the barricades there now, it doesn't cost the city any more money. And I am asking that it remain closed until completion of the project. You can do an ample speed study through MINDOT and get their suggestion on if it is a safe intersection, what the speed limits are going to be before you make your final decision. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Question, if I may. So you said that Scott Thompson from Area Seven, MINDOT, said that the suggested speed limits would not be applicable based off of...
They, he would not advise these ones. No, he would not.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, he said that the fifty, if anything, where it's currently at, would stay there and then where the thirty mile an hour would more than likely change to a forty or forty-five until you get to the bottom. One last thing I would like to note is, I find it a little ironic, is after I left the open house last Thursday, I went out to my shop and I was coming back. My babies were in the car with me and a vehicle pulled out in front of me from that little blue house on the west side. If you drive out there, right by Elmwood Circle, you can see my car tracks. Because if I wouldn't have hit the ditch, I would have wiped them out. And that's scary. They're line of sight. They have so much more than what Coventry Road does. And I have pictures of it. I emailed them to Jasper. It was a scary thing, and I can't wait for Coventry Road to be open so we can experience this on a daily level.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Let's see here. Mr. Ed Faye?
No.
Mr. Ryan Morrell?
This is more for clarity. I did look up the hundred and fifty-five page document that was on your website. Not initially. Your city staff really helped me out. You got to push through three or four different paragraphs to get there. What interested me was the coiled streets and diagrams. And some of them, one in particular, was the pixels weren't good enough to to emerge it to a point where you could read some of the engineering connotations. And I like to make reference to that. And I actually have a screenshot maybe showing, approaching the council showing you that, but it's, it deals with the intersection of Bridge Road and North Main. And fifty-second contravention they had. Then if you go through south one block on the old Main Street to where it connects with Ferry Street, they have it cordoned off with red dotted lines. The area that parcel number one sixteen and parcel number one seventeen join, which is the old mall. But that whole area is cordoned off in red dots. And if you try to open that up and look at it, you can't figure out what the engineering notations are. And so with that, I understand that this project has nothing to do with the downtown project. But I'm curious as to what that con... Would you like me to show you the picture?
Well, I can address it. That's a staging area in the mall parking lot, I believe, is what you're referencing. And I want to make sure you downloaded the, it's a hundred and twenty-three megabyte document that I linked. And that's the full engineering document.
Let's not make assumptions and just take a look at it.
I believe so. Corey might be able to pull it up and look at it. But yeah, the document itself for the actual download should be...
It's right here.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, where you're getting that document from.
Your website. And then the links to the people that are, that did the engineering study are the hundred and fifty-five pages.
So there was a link provided in that document of the full resolution image. So that's what's in it. So I can, Ron, I can send you the link to the full resolution image?
That'd be great. Thank you.
If you want, but it was included in the packet.
Yeah, if you expand it, you can't read that. So it's in the project. It's connotated if you don't know what it is. So my concern is that are there any construction costs that are associated with this project that might be considered preparatory infrastructure for opening up Main Street?
Yeah, I'll reach out to you, Ron. I got your...
Well, I'd like you to reach out to everybody else.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. and Mrs. Joel Barb Hicks?
I remember we were the ones that signed in.
I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody.
The answers are going to be the same.
I'm bringing it all in. I'll be there for you all.
Okay. Mr. Lyle Olson?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council and City Administration, my name is Lyle Olson. I've been a resident of this community since nineteen seventy-five, which probably puts me in this community longer than anybody sitting up on that stand there. I have, I wish to take a moment to clarify my qualifications for saying what I'm going to say. I'm a graduate engineer, mechanical, with a master's in business. I have for my entire career made change. What that means is when an organization or a company wishes to change how they make a product or come up with a new product, there are industrially approved and accepted methodologies. And I will address my concern about those at this time. A good project is one that's led by a good leader. A leader who can and will listen and modify his or her position. A leader who will seek help when they realize that their knowledge isn't appropriate, isn't enough. There are standards that are recognized and required in industries in the U.S., including the food industry and chemical process that call for specific steps and specific things to be done. The bottom line of all that is to have a project that achieves the goal, achieves it within budget, achieves it within the scope set out for it, and achieves it within the timetable that's set out for it. One of the checks and balances that's built into that is something called a process hazard analysis, a PHA, in which the leader of that project calls together a group of experts. calls together a group of experts. And an expert can be the person who, whose everyday job it is to perform a task that's being changed, all the way up to the legal and the marketing and the sales and the accounting, all those things. And they say, they go through the project line by line, and they say, is this correct? Can something happen that we haven't taken into account that would be adverse to the budget, to the scope, to the product, to human health and safety? It is my contention, and it's the reason I'm standing here now, is that we have not seen a well-managed project when we have to have public hearings at which there is no information about the speed in this area, even though we know, all these people know for all the years they've been in town, they know that there's speed in that intersection. A speed study was not done until after the first public meeting. Why? Isn't the speed through that thing something that should have been in the very details of the planning? So some of us asked for the data from that speed study. What we were given, and I thank Ken Schietz for this, because this is the first day's results of the city-owned speed measuring system. And this was done on August 6th. Now, the day starts for most people at midnight. The day of the study, the time didn't start until 6 o'clock in the morning. The speed study ended at 10 o'clock at night. Is the information that the city got to use to make a valid judgment in this project, based on only 75% of the time that people use this road, wasn't that part of what should have been done to say, hey, this is a red flag. We've got to do something here? 213 cars, 218 cars out of 331 cars on that one day that were measured during that abbreviated time period were in excess of 32 miles an hour. 65% of roughly two-thirds, two cars out of three. Where's the comment? I didn't hear it tonight. I didn't hear it at the public meeting Thursday night. I didn't hear it at previous meetings. Where is the concern that says, good lord, people are speeding and that's a... That's a potential injury. It's a potential death. It's a potential accident. No, what we heard is, oh, well, by some authority, this is what you can do. Nobody said, including our friends from Bolton and Mank, this is a life-threatening situation. Nobody up there said, this is a life-threatening situation that needs to be addressed. Subsequent to the studies that the city did, which they did not share with anybody because can I ask for copies of the rest of the data? It wasn't done. Then suddenly, the burden had to go to Bolton and Mank. None of us have copies of that data. Cannot try to get copies for us. We didn't get any more. So my question is, don't you care what the odds are of injuring a person? You only care about a statistical approach based on data that's in clear, good, dry, daytime, excellent driving conditions? Don't we have to think about, as was mentioned, what happens when it's nighttime raining, snowing, foggy, slip, slippery? Doesn't that come into account in some numerical garbage that's been put up on the screen in front of us? I personally find it unbelievable that we can be talking about 5 or 10 or 15 miles an hour when we don't talk about what's the probability of injury and death. Now, that has been mentioned by Joanne, and it's been mentioned by a few more. But no mention of that there. Now, I would ask the city council to set this topic aside, and let's have a really professional study done of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all we have on the list. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address City Council? Sir, please come on up and identify yourself.
There's a note that was here that I'd like to... Oh, I guess I'm going to want it. Just a little bit late, so I'd like to pass this up. If you would, please. My name is Peter Fabolous. I live at 138 Woodcrest Terrace, which is just a short distance from the intersection of Woodcrest and Coventry Road. I'm sorry the Boy Scouts aren't here because I would like for them to realize that every issue has pros and cons, and I would have liked for them to hear the other side. Despite our differences, Mr. Olson and I are still friends. And, okay, I took some notes at the last meeting that we had. I heard the safety issue with speeding on Elmwood, the increased traffic on Coventry, installation of electronic-controlled barriers, making that section of Coventry a gated community. It's been a dead end, blocked off for 40-plus years. This is the third state that I've been in, by the way, that I've lived in, that that issue has been restated. You know, we've done like this forever. And the poor snow removal at the end of the road. What hasn't really been, kind of been quickly put aside, is the ownership of the road, which now belongs to the city. Who pays for this gated community? And the electronic devices? Most importantly, what does the rest of the town think? Now, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm also a retired engineer, like Lyle Olson is. So I have a bachelor's degree in computer science. But what most people don't realize or don't know is that I also have a bachelor of arts degree in philosophy with a heavy concentration on ethics. And I think that kind of applies here at the meeting. What my proposed solution would be, solutions, number one is for the speeding traffic. Now, there are conditions in the winter, fog and other things that are, that were mentioned. People in that area, including myself, have the option of doing what we've been doing for the eight years that my wife and I have been here in town and not using that intersection. Going around the way we've been doing it since I've been here. It's safer. So the people there have the option of not using that. And the biggest thing that I have is that there was a petition that was going around. There may be 60, 80, 100 signatures or whatever on it. But what does the rest of the town, the other 99-plus percent of the LaSour residents, think about part of their taxes going to making this a special road, a gated community, for example? Of supporting that part of the road that they can't use? What, one possibility that I came up with was that have the, those residents start a, start a neighborhood association, partition the town to leave that as a dead-end road, and at that point, they take the responsibility of snow removal, maintenance on the street that the rest of us are paying for. And that's, you know, we have heard from the people that are living there, but not from the other members of the community that are essentially supportive to maintain that road so that it can stay a dead-end road. To benefit, I think there were six houses, maybe seven houses on that block. Thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Anybody else?
I'm ready. I don't have a degree either. But I do travel.
Mr. Hicks, right?
Yeah, okay. I do travel up and down, I've weighed once more. I don't know, 2,500, 3,000 miles a week. So anyhow, I know a little bit about safety because I travel 169. If you've ever been on that, it's gotten really kind of different in the last few years. I do know that our shop is where LeBels used to be. And I think it was there back when I was probably 14, 15. And there's never been an accident at that intersection. As far as Coventry goes, I don't care if it opens or not. I live out on Dopey. If you want to drive up the road, go up that hill. And then when the guy that's in charge of the city streets blames you for taking your crushed rock, and then you have to show him the bill that you got it at Johnson Agri, you have to say, I bought the rock for the road. But anyhow, one thing that I have noticed as I went to Brainerd this weekend. And when I go to Brainerd, I'm in a hurry. So I don't have to tell you what I was doing. But when you come into a facility, into a city, as long as you're doing the streets, and we know they're coming into town, everybody's coming from a 50 and it drops down to a 30, and by the time they hit down the cul-de-sac, they're doing 40. But these lit signs that come up to alert you of what your speed is, that helps me a lot. You know, because it isn't just a sign. The sign lights up, and then underneath tells you what your speed is. So then you can kind of react. Because I come into this town too, and I come down the bottom of the hill and I'm doing 40 miles an hour. Maybe I'm on my headset on my phone, not paying as much attention as I should be. But it happens. Those signs really wake you up because you'll see what you're doing, and you can act accordingly. That's one thing that I think would help in regard to signage. One question I've got on 112 is, 112 sign to curb gutter all the way to 115? No? Good. That makes me happy. Otherwise, you and I go to Wisconsin, and I can show you almost every road over there that's blacktop and curb gutter. So anyhow, I still have the question in my mind, and everybody's told me that when this project's going on, I'm going to have access to my shops for service work, for winter work. And nobody here on this council wants those semis to fire up at 3:30 in the morning outside your bedroom window. And I would say, put it on high I.O. for 30 minutes, let it warm up. So, you know, that's some of my concerns. I thought when we heard this about signage, because I do travel a lot, that happens. I can remember maybe, out of all the years I've been on 112, there was one accident. I came out kind of by the intersection down by Carquest. Or it was Carquest, it's now Kenny's Repair. I think there was one accident there. So, you know, when you talk about speeds and accidents and all this, there's not been any accidents out there. You know, if you want to drop it to 30, I really don't care. I drive a semi. People have to follow me, and most of the time I'm doing 30 because it takes a long time to get one rolling. So that's all I've got for right now. I am a little concerned about the assessments because I remember years ago when my good friend Rick Almert was in charge, because I went to school with him, how morningside drive went. So I might keep an eye on that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Anybody else? Come to the microphone and identify yourself, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dave Johnson. I've been a resident, my family's been a resident of LaSour for about 31 years. We live on Coventry, a ways down from the intersection we're talking about. But I'd like to put the Coventry thing in a bigger perspective and something I think that's getting lost in the shuffle here. This is a unique opportunity to improve our community. People have been griping about the streets, myself included, for a long time. And the worst ones are Elmwood and Ferry and Bridge in some respects. And this is going to fix that. Our comp plan talked about LaSour needing more amenities. Certainly, good roads is a basic to that. But this project also includes bike paths, walking trails, improved curb and gutter, a much better road going through our industrial park and all the way through town. So don't lose sight of the fact that this is positive. All of a sudden, during the last few months, things have gotten shifted over to focusing on Coventry. And to me, we weren't even looking at that here half a year earlier when I was on City Council. So that's kind of popped up. But when I read your article, the article about a meeting here a couple of months ago, and this was talked about, and Coventry was talked about, what caught my attention was two things. One, Keith Kelly talked about emergency vehicle access being a reason to open it. The other thing that was mentioned was that there was going to be a 1.9-foot reduction in the slope so that the sightlines would be much farther. And I thought that made a lot of sense, not only for that intersection, but for LeBels going south or north. The other thing to look at there is Caucus Drive is there. There's homes there. People are turning off and using that street. If the sightlines are dropped, what's the difference between the sightlines for Caucus and Coventry? These are questions. I'm not promoting opening this or closing it. But I think there's questions that, I'm not sure that that 1.9-foot is... It isn't in the 30 pages of attachments I read today. Jasper told me that the 1.9-foot reduction is in no matter what. Is that correct? Whether this is open or not. And if you go down on Elmwood and look at what 1.9 reduction at the top of that slope would mean, the sightlines would be greatly increased compared to what they're now. The other thing in our comp plan that looked at increasing amenities, I think one of the things that would be helpful is more free-flowing traffic in streets. So that would be a point in opening it, if it can be done safely, obviously. I've lived on Coventry, and up until, moved here in '88, so early 1990s when they had the development, Sean Kirby's development. Coventry, where we live, right across from Shaplers, used to be a dead end. My kids played with their kids. They played hockey there because it was a dead end, just like Coventry is right now on the west of there. But it was opened up to help a free flow of traffic into that new neighborhood. And everybody adjusted. So I think, let's not lose sight of the big picture here. This is a... This is a tremendous, unique opportunity. It's gonna be great for our communities. But don't lose sight of the comp plan that says we need to provide amenities for our, our, our town. Certainly, safety is important. But let's not just dismiss this because there's some difficulties, certainly analyze it. I think allowing me the case for pretty analyzing the data and making sure that, uh, the safety things are, are covered and studied, and I would, I would certainly second that. But don't lose sight of the big picture. The Coventry thing is not a major deal. But it might be a, a nice amenity to have if it can be done safely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Anybody else? Please, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Heather Hemig, I live at seven twenty-two.
What was his name?
Hemig, H-A-E-M-I-G. I live at seven twenty-two Ferry Street. So that's there, just east of Elmwood, that was recently added to the project. I would just encourage you to make sure that you reach out to all of the homeowners that are on that block and also any, any other areas that may be affected by assessments. The first notice that we got of this change to the project was in the newspaper. And my husband and I have been going to every single open house that we possibly could and following this project very closely because of the proximity of our property to that project. So I would just encourage you to make sure that all of those homeowners are aware of the change and that they may be getting assessment notices in the future.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Mr. Hage. If I may. As you all know, I'm David Schaber. I'm a Leesor resident for fifty-six years. Um, I don't think there's too many people up here that have been involved with Leesor for fifty-six years. Um, I'd be curious to know who's the one that started off the big sweep to open up Coventry Road. Um, that road has been closed as long as I can remember. And I don't see any importance to opening up that road. Um, there's a handful of people that are in favor of this for some reason. Um, there's a member on the council here that, uh, I feel should probably abstain, ethically abstain from any involvement in there, uh, because his father lives there. Um, and again, um, I just want to know how this is so great for the community. Uh, opening up that street, how that's so great. That, that's gonna, just, Leesor's gonna be just marvelous because of that. I don't feel it. Um, and another thing, all those extra trails and blocks that are added way out to the airport, how many people are gonna be using them? Handful of people. Everybody gotta pay for a handful of people. Taking money from Paul just to satisfy Mary. Um, and I'm sorry, but I feel that's the Leesor way. I mean, it saddens me, I've stated this before, it saddens me what Leesor has become. Um, you drive on streets thirty miles an hour, uh, there's construction going on, the roads are rough, you reduce speed, you got people flip you off, um, call you names. Um, Leesor's become full of trash. Um, and it takes the good citizens of Leesor to get the trash out of Leesor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. And I think that what we ought to do is, any of our thoughts, concerns, questions that have come up as a result of tonight's meeting, let's make sure that we get those, uh, put together via an email to our city administrator. They'll say no later than the end of this week. Fair enough? Next item on the docket is the Fifth Street easement discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the delinquent bill certification, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hage, members of city council, uh, before you, we have another public hearing. Uh, notices were sent out for accounts that have either accounts, uh, receivable delinquencies or, uh, utility bill payment delinquencies. Uh, that list has been out, they've been invited, uh, to come into this meeting to dispute any sort of, um, bill that they have that is delinquent. City council has the option, um, well, let me just start over, kind of. Uh, four hundred, four hundred and eighty-nine letters were sent out for this, um, to the public, um, inviting them to this public hearing. Delinquent bills include utility bills, fire department invoices, damaged properties, like if somebody hits.
Please, we have a debate and take the conversations outside. Thank you, sir.
Um, property damage, let's say somebody hits a, uh, light pole. And we have to, we have to get that money back, we send the bill, sometimes those bills don't get paid. Um, the total amount that we had before was four hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. We've recouped some of that, now the current total, uh, per our finance director is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that is out there, delinquent, delinquent dealing. Um, so the process that we have tonight, we will open a public hearing. Uh, we'll allow people to talk about their, their bills. City council has the option to adjust those accordingly, how they feel fit. Uh, for example, last year there was an individual came, that came in, um, and it was directed to myself to reach out to that person and, and talk to them about that and report back to city council. Um, things like that are perfectly relevant. We're not looking to certify these tonight, this is just the public hearing. The certification will actually occur at a later date. So we're just looking for if there are any specifics, what accounts or what, what changes, what direction you would like, uh, staff to, to go towards, if there are any. So, uh, the process will be open up the public hearing, allow people to talk, close the public hearing, give direction. With that, you, you are, feel, feel free to, uh, ask any questions, uh, or open up the public hearing.
Does anybody, does anybody have any questions for our city administrator? Entertain a motion to go ahead and open the public hearing specifically for delinquent bill certification.
Some will.
Is there a second?
Not yet.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Anybody from the audience wish to go ahead and address city council requiring the delinquent bill certification process and what we're talking about at this point? Entertain a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing for the delinquent bill certification.
Some will.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to our regular agenda, first item on the docket is Smith Street easement discussion, seven alpha, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hage, members of city council, uh, before you is, uh, there's a couple of documents here that we're asking city council to execute. What this is related to, um, this hasn't been, we haven't really discussed it in, in, uh, at a city council meeting, but staff has been working with the developer, common bond of the project Meadows Two, which is located adjacent to Turo. What we've looked at and to support ingress and egress of that, of that community, we would like to extend Fifth Street to, to extend to their property. Uh, there's been a couple of things that we've had to do. We've had to work with the Minnesota Valley Health Center and the, and the, and HUD to secure the ability to be able to, um, secure easement. Uh, because there's some, there's some loans that have been given to Minnesota Valley Health credit, or center from HUD, and they have, um, an encumbrance on their, on that property for that. So, we have HUD's ear right now. City engineer, Fine Thing, has said, well, we're, we're talking to HUD, they're agreeable to do this, we should bring this to city council, even though this project probably won't, um, break ground until the spring of twenty-twenty. Uh, but what we are doing is securing the easement. Um, this won't happen unless this project actually occurs. Um, and, uh, it, it basically clears the way so that we can connect when that does happen. Um, so I'll pull up, uh, I'll, the recommendation, there's two documents. We're looking for a motion to execute the public right-of-way easement document and a motion excluding the consent and subordinating, executing the consent and subordinate, subordination document. Now, for those familiar or not familiar with the area, the red box kind of shows the area that, uh, the certificate survey is in here for, um, for the project. Just to kind of get some of that with them. So, if there are any questions, please let me know, otherwise we're looking for a couple, um, separate motions to execute these documents, securing this right-of-way. There is no cost at this time for this, so this is just a matter of filing paperwork.
Anybody from council have a question?
Where is it actually?
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, actually connecting it. So, um, as you can see from this, this yellow dotted line indicates the, the kind of center line of the road. Basically, it's extending this line, this intersection, straight south. Securing that right-of-way, the same right-of-way that we have for Fifth Street in this area. So you'd be able to tie in this road and extend this road to this point. Would it essentially just be like a dead end there into their parking lots? Or are we gonna connect to another street? It, it wouldn't connect to another street, it would dead end into their parking lot. So, but it would, it would help with, um, ingress and egress from their property, emergency services. In the future, we could look at connecting this to, I think that's Sixth Street over here by Joe Eagle. Uh, there's, you know, an unimproved parking lot here. You'd have some additional access there as well, but, um, it was identified as an opportunity to extend this at the time to, to help with some of those, um, entry and exit issues.
Council member?
Kirby.
Kirby.
Now, would, would, would you be able to get on with that gravel into the park in a car, if you wish?
Correct, yeah, so there would, there would be, you'd be able to go from, uh, there'd be a ramp or apron going from there into the park itself.
But the park would just continue to be gravel?
It'd be gravel, it wouldn't be an actual road. It's, it's unclear if that road is, or that area is dedicated for roadway. It looks like it could be, um, but at this time, we're not looking to improve that section between Fifth and Sixth Street. It could be done, um, but not at this time, we're not looking at that.
I guess my concern would be is what's the importance of doing this now as opposed to waiting until there might be some potential growth?
Yeah, so we would look to try to recoup as much of these costs from the developer as possible, so that's an opportunity to save taxpayers some money. Um, also, uh, tidiness of this, we are in direct communication with HUD, the, the, basically the linchpin to allowing this to happen. This isn't, this isn't by any means saying that we're going to do this. This is just securing the right-of-way. Uh, if we don't want to do it for some extended period of time, or let's say this development doesn't actually build, uh, we're not obligated by any means to put this in, it's just securing the right-of-way.
And to be clear, this is absolutely no dollars to the city of Leesor at this time.
Minimal financial.
Anything else?
Let, let me simply speak to this in a different way. You heard earlier a very quick report from the planning commission about land use and transportation. This is an example of where if we had a plan, this would be frankly a no-brainer. We, we'd have figured this stuff out ahead of time. So it's just a simple example of it. I speak in favor of this. I think it's, it makes great sense to get the easement while you have the opportunity. Get it now. Let's do it.
Jasper, is there a way to be able to put that on a map, I'm having a hard time picturing this. A little bit better than that.
Yeah. So I, maybe I, I can definitely get you that, but visually, this is the joint services building. This is the food shelf up here. This is the Minnesota Valley Healthcare, here's the helipad that you see. So this is kind of the back street, like if you go to.
Turtles this way.
Yep, Turtles down to the south. Here's Joe Eagle Anderson Park with the shelter over, maybe over here. We, I could definitely, we could definitely get something to you that is more inclusive overly this actual survey and, uh, in the area on Air Photo.
I didn't realize it would make those to, to the, to the, to the.
And if it's, if it's open, which we're not talking about now, but if it did happen, it's essentially a backdoor accessway to LaSour Meadows, which is again a safety concern.
Anything else? Entertain a motion then to finalize the public right-of-way easement for the extension of South Fifth Street contingent on the actual development of Meadows Two.
Some will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Also entertain a motion to execute the consent and subordinate, the subordination document, uh, for staff to go ahead and take care of that here in the future. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Some will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
Go on, say it, sir.
Do you recess?
Now move on to line item seven Bravo, which is the approved investment policy. Now move on to item seven Bravo, which is the approved investment policy. City Administrator approval. City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hage, members of City Council, um, before you is, uh, kind of an item related to our financial audits. Mayor Hage, members of City Council, um, before you is, uh, kind of an item related to our financial audits. Uh, and a couple of questions came up about this policy and why we're seeing it. Uh, and a couple of questions came up about this policy and why we're seeing it. As we start picking off some of the larger items that are, that are identified in our financial audits, some long-term type of things, As we start picking off some of the larger items that are, that are identified in our financial audits, some long-term type of things, um, they start making recommendations for some of the policies and look at some of the way we handle things administratively. um, they start making recommendations for some of the policies and look at some of the way we handle things administratively. One of those is an assessment policy, or sorry, an investment policy that, that we haven't updated since two thousand and one. One of those is an assessment policy, or sorry, an investment policy that, that we haven't updated since two thousand and one. Um, we have Finance Director Zach Dow here tonight to talk a little bit about this. Um, we have Finance Director Zach Dow here tonight to talk a little bit about this. I know there were some concerns about who's doing what and, and clarity in the actual document. I know there were some concerns about who's doing what and, and clarity in the actual document. Um, just so everybody knows, there's no rush to doc, to, to pass something like this. Um, just so everybody knows, there's no rush to doc, to, to pass something like this. If there's things that are unclear, there are things that we could make more clear, um, now is the time to do it. If there's things that are unclear, there are things that we could make more clear, um, now is the time to do it. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to Zach. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Director Dow, good evening, sir. Director Dow, good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Um, I'm gonna kind of briefly go over this, I know there's some questions that Mayor Krogman had that I think we need to address. Um, I'm gonna kind of briefly go over this, I know there's some questions that Mayor Krogman had that I think we need to address. And then we'll go forward, um, and I'll be answering questions. And then we'll go forward, um, and I'll be answering your questions. So, the investment policy is basically just a written policy that provides the city and its employees a consistent and documented method of investing. So, the investment policy is basically just a written policy that provides the city and its employees a consistent and documented method of investing. Um, this policy approves the Finance Director and myself and City Administrator approval to make investments on behalf of the city. Um, this policy approves the Finance Director and myself and City Administrator approval to make investments on behalf of the city. Currently, the City Administrator is the only one who has authority to do this. Currently, the City Administrator is the only one who has authority to do this. Um, this retains oversight of the council to approve where the investors are being held. Um, this retains oversight of the council to approve where the investors are being held. So, there's some language in the investment policy that conducts where the council has us invest the money at, So, there's some language in the investment policy that conducts where the council has us invest the money at, but not for specific investments. but not for specific investments. So, the City Administrator and the Finance Director would be able to coordinate ideas and plans and such to invest money for the city, on the city, on the behalf of the city. So, the City Administrator and the Finance Director would be able to coordinate ideas and plans and such to invest money for the city, on the city, on the behalf of the city. But we could not decide on where we invested it, so we'd have to pick, for example, we have four M right now, we'd have to invest with four M. But we could not decide on where we invested it, so we'd have to pick, for example, we have four M right now, we'd have to invest with four M. We can't just go with any broker without the City Council's knowledge of that. We can't just go with any broker without the City Council's knowledge of that. If we wanted to go with another broker and we decided that was a better idea to diversify our portfolio, If we wanted to go with another broker and we decided that was a better idea to diversify our portfolio, we would have to have that approved by City Council before we were able to make any investments with that broker. we would have to have that approved by City Council before we were able to make any investments with that broker. And then this updates the original investment policy that was adopted in two thousand and one. And then this updates the original investment policy that was adopted in two thousand and one. This has just been an, an item that came up during our two thousand and eighteen audit, that the auditors recommended we update, This has just been an, an item that came up during our two thousand and eighteen audit, that the auditors recommended we update, since it's been almost twenty years since it's been touched. since it's been almost twenty years since it's been touched. And, um, things have changed in twenty years, within the city of LeSour and within just investment world overall, so, um, let's stand here with any questions. And, um, things have changed in twenty years within the city of LeSour and within just investment world overall, so, um, let's stand here with any questions.
So, I'll pick up where Zach left off a little bit, just, again, there's no, there's no rush to do this, I know there's some questions about some of the language. So, I'll pick up where Zach left off a little bit, just, again, there's no, there's no rush to do this, I know there's some questions about some of the language. If we wanna table this discussion for a future date and get some comments about some language updates, we could sure do that. If we wanna table this discussion for a future date and get some comments about some language updates, we could sure do that. Um, and then that could be evaluated at a future meeting. Um, and then that could be evaluated at a future meeting.
Well, I think I'd like to go ahead and turn this, uh, over for the questions, if you start as a council member Krogman has, if that would be okay, Well, I think I'd like to go ahead and turn this, uh, over for the questions, if you start as a council member Krogman has, if that would be okay, because you did such an eloquent job pointing out some issues with this that, uh, you could do much better than I could do, so please. because you did such an eloquent job pointing out some issues with this that, uh, you could do much better than I could do, so please.
If I may, ask you to just look at page three, they're not numbered. If I may, ask you to just look at page three, they're not numbered. The section is the second one on the page, the first is Confirmed Interest, the second is Authorized Financial Institute and Dealer. The section is the second one on the page, the first is Confirmed Interest, the second is Authorized Financial Institute and Dealer. I'm not sure what that means, but that's not what we're looking at. I'm not sure what that means, but that's not what we're looking at. It's the first sentence that is concerning to me. It's the first sentence that is concerning to me. It has very strong language, but it may not be what needs to be there. It has very strong language, but it may not be what needs to be there. I'm not against the idea of having the folks do this if we want to do it, the question is can we legally do so? I'm not against the idea of having the folks do this if we want to do it, the question is can we legally do so? It, it quotes Minnesota Statute one eighteen point oh two, but look at these operative words. It, it quotes Minnesota Statute one eighteen point oh two, but look at these operative words. That the City Council is responsible for conducting, and the next word that's operative is transactions. That the City Council is responsible for conducting, and the next word that's operative is transactions. You're talking about making decisions about what fund is to be moved money from one fund to another, even though it's with the same company. You're talking about making decisions about what fund is to be moved money from one fund to another, even though it's with the same company. That is a transaction. That is a transaction. And maybe this language, this needs to be tweaked a little bit. And maybe this language, this needs to be tweaked a little bit. So I would ask that, what I'm suggesting is that we table it, have legal counsel tell us exactly what we're allowed to do. So I would ask that, what I'm suggesting is that we table it, have legal counsel tell us exactly what we're allowed to do. It may be that conducting investment transactions would not be the proper wording. It may be that conducting investment transactions would not be the proper wording. I applaud our staff for working on this policy, I just wanna be careful, make sure we're on solid ground. I applaud our staff for working on this policy, I just wanna be careful, make sure we're on solid ground. So that's my concern. So that's my concern.
Would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
I would like that we table this for the next meeting to clarification on the ability of the City Council to delegate such investment transactions. I would like that we table this for the next meeting to clarification on the ability of the City Council to delegate such investment transactions.
I will second that, uh, motion, um, City Administrator approval. I will second that, uh, motion, um, City Administrator approval.
Uh, just, uh, would it be all right if staff worked directly with Councilmember Krogman to kind of come up with some, uh, language for this, for the next meeting? Uh, just, uh, would it be all right if staff worked directly with Councilmember Krogman to kind of come up with some, uh, language for this, for the next meeting?
That would be fine, and I certainly would like to volunteer my services as well, if you need me, so. That would be fine, and I certainly would like to volunteer my services as well, if you need me, so.
Sure, I would like to be able to see what that is too, because he's mimicking things that I brought up in the fall. Sure, I would like to be able to see what that is too, because he's mimicking things that I brought up in the fall.
Yeah, we, we have a personnel budget meeting on Wednesday, so I would suggest that I speak to that, that's a good chat item. We, we have a personnel budget meeting on Wednesday, so I would suggest that I speak to that, that's a good chat item.
I'd like, like to be very clear, I think I have to do this since I have a legal license. I'd like, like to be very clear, I think I have to do this since I have a legal license. I'm not practicing law, I'm not going to practice law. I'm not practicing law, I'm not going to practice law. We need to get somebody to give us a legal opinion, I can look at the statute and give you my opinion, but not in legal capacity, uh, because of license deterrence. We need to get somebody to give us a legal opinion, I can look at the statute and give you my opinion, but not in legal capacity, uh, because of license deterrence.
Understood, so we have a motion, we have a second on this, uh, all in favor? Understood, so we have a motion, we have a second on this, uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Motion is carried.
I didn't vote. I didn't, I didn't vote.
Did he just say aye? Did he just say aye?
No. No.
No. No.
I had a question, it, just a, just a timeline and we can work this out afterwards, um, after the, the action. I had a question, it, just a, just a timeline and we can work this out afterwards, um, after the, the action. But I don't think we'll be able to get it on the agenda for this Wednesday, I'd have to consult with our, our legal, the thirtieth, I think, motion for the thirtieth, yeah, okay. But I don't think we'll be able to get it on the agenda for this Wednesday, I'd have to consult with our, our legal, the thirtieth, I think, motion for the thirtieth, yeah, okay.
Then we'd probably have to delay this then till after that second P and B that we're having October. Then we'd probably have to delay this then till after that second P and B that we're having October.
Correct, and that's fine. Correct, and that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. Yeah, that's fine, okay. So we'll defer till probably the first meeting in December, whatever. So we'll defer till probably the first meeting in December, whatever. We just wanna make sure we get the language right. We just wanna make sure we get the language right.
While you're writing, I'll again say I thank the staff for working on it. While you're writing, I'll again say I thank the staff for working on it, it's not a criticism of them, it's just to be clear, so thank you. It's not a criticism of them, it's just to be clear, so thank you.
Next item on the docket is seven Charlie, which is approved transfer to cleanup funds, the City Administrator approval. Next item on the docket is seven Charlie, which is approved transfer to cleanup funds, the City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hage, members of Council, uh, this is, transfer memo is a document that, that goes through some of the feedback we got from our two thousand and eighteen financial audit Mayor Hage, members of Council, uh, this is, transfer memo is a document that, that goes through some of the feedback we got from our two thousand and eighteen financial audit on cleaning up some of the funds that are hanging out there that we no longer use. on cleaning up some of the funds that are hanging out there that we no longer use. Uh, to get into the details, I'll, I'll ask Finance Director Dow to, to go over this, I'm- Uh, to get into the details, I'll, I'll ask Finance Director Dow to, to go over this, I'm-
Director Dow, again. Director Dow, again.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you again, Mayor, members of City Council. Um, this transfer memo is just to clean up a few items that we had noted on the two thousand and eighteen audit. Um, this transfer memo is just to clean up a few items that we had noted on the two thousand and eighteen audit. Um, the first one is the fact that we have a fund that is no longer being used, that the auditors recommended that we close. Um, the first one is the fact that we have a fund that is no longer being used, that the auditors recommended that we close. After a fund has no longer been used for a period of two years, it's considered inactive, and then we're able to close that fund. After a fund has no longer been used for a period of two years, it's considered inactive, and then we're able to close that fund. Um, that is a LeSour Hill Improvement Fund, so that was a product that was completed back in two thousand and twelve. Um, that is a LeSour Hill Improvement Fund, so that was a product that was completed back in two thousand and twelve. It was a product that was supposed to be paid back with projects in, or money that came back in from- It was a product that was supposed to be paid back with projects in, or money that came back in from-
We can't, we can't, Jim, I have too much stress going on out there. We can't, we can't, Jim, I have too much stress going on out there.
Somebody's not, we're getting the idea that we're actually being paid by city funds to do our job, Somebody's not, we're getting the idea that we're actually being paid by city funds to do our job, and they're just wasting that money right now. and they're just wasting that money right now.
It sounds like that, I don't exactly know who that is. It sounds like that, I don't exactly know who that is.
So do you need a request for a recess? So do you need a request for a recess?
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Do you recess? Do you inform? Okay, we'll re-when we're gonna have disruptions.
Thank you for three, start where we started at. So this transfer memo again has been a split up to 2018 audit. The Lesure Hill Improvement Fund was a fund that was used to complete some projects back in 2012. I'm not exactly sure what those projects were, because they were done in 2012 prior to myself, but they were done. Then they had a basically repayment scheduled back to another fund. They had some funding that came in later on, but they weren't gonna get that money until the project was completed. So they got it done and then they repaid a special assessment fund. And that was done back in 2017, so that fund has been repaid and no longer needed any of that money that came back from that project. Since that project was a project for Lesure Hill, I staff decided that it was probably best to put that back into capital improvements for the city overall. And it was Capital Improvement Fund, since it can use for future projects within the city. That amount there is thirty-three thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and sixty cents. That is the first transfer. The second transfer is just a book cleaning item, book cleaning up item, basically. So there's two funds that run our sewer department. One is called the Sewer Fund, which is our normal operations fund, and one is called the MRF PUC Fund. So what the MRF PUC Fund is for, is designed for, is to be able to make sure that we are getting repaid from MRF PUC, the amount of dollars that we put in to MRF PUC time. So the time that people spend on MRF PUC that are our city employees, get their time coded there, and then we will get reimbursed from MRF PUC for that time, and it's supposed to go back into that fund. With staff, it had changed over to being put back into the Sewer Fund for some reason. I'm sure why that happened, but it did. MRF PUC was still paying us back, it just wasn't going into the correct fund. So it showed that the MRF PUC Fund was negative dollars. Came in my question of why we have a negative MRF PUC Fund when it's supposed to be net zero. I did find out, like I said, that all the money was going back to the Sewer Fund, so the transfer to clean up, the MRF PUC Fund just needs to move money from the Sewer Fund to MRF PUC Fund.
Might I add that it wasn't the commission's fault?
It was not. No, it was just bookkeeping, strictly bookkeeping, so. Again, we were getting paid back from MRF PUC, it has nothing to do with that cash flow, it's just where the money's being put in what pot. City financials and government, things are very complicated. So because of tho- because of that, we need to approve a transfer from the Sewer Fund to the MRF PUC Funds to basically make that fund back to net zero, and then it makes it easier to invoice MRF PUC for time and so on and so forth. So those are the two transfers that I am looking to get approved for tonight, and both are recommended by the auditors during the 2018 audit.
Is there any questions for our Finance Director? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and take this as two separate motions. Entertain a motion for the Lesure Hills Improvement Fund sends thirty-three thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and sixty cents to the Capital Improvement Fund for future capital purchases.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Also entertain a motion for the Sewer Fund sending two hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents to MRF PUC Minnesota River Valley Public Utility Commission Fund to get the fund back to zero as originally designed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Now move on to Item Seven Delta, which is the water meter installation project finalizing over City Council's approval.
Mayor, hey, members of City Council, this is a kind of an update and a request as far as procedure goes to finish finalize our water meter installation project. We have about three hundred meters that don't fall into this realm of two to three inch or four inch meter customers that have not scheduled the time to be able to have their meters swapped out. What this third and final notice, and just as a note, Legal Council assisted in drafting this to make sure that we follow all procedures and legal considerations for this type of thing. But what we're looking for is basically to put some pressure on those last three hundred people or three hundred accounts that have not attempted to schedule any sort of meeting to get their meter swapped out. Now, the key word here is attempted. So if somebody's tried to and had a difficult time, we've run through a lot of challenges with this project as far as the subcontractor of our general contractor has gone. So we want to be very clear that this won't affect them. So if they've attempted, if somebody's attempted to schedule a meter or a swap out, they're not part of this group. We're trying to work with them, we've tried, we've changed up some things internally. The admin assistant at the front desk here is actually filling the schedules up of the installers now as a second means of being able to schedule, so I think things are moving along pretty well. We hope that because of doing this and talking about this at City Council and potentially being authorized to send out this third and final notice, that that'll get some of these three hundred or so holdouts to schedule something. So what we're looking for is authorization to send out this third and final notice. You'll see it's in the packet, there's language about who to call, when to call, what to do. And really, if anybody just makes contact with anybody at M and E, which is the subcontractor or the city, they're no longer on this list. It's the individuals that are consciously not being able to, not trying to schedule out their meter swap out. So I know there's been issues, both, you know, on city staff and city council of trying to schedule with the subcontracting group, and it's just not working out, they're not showing up, things like that. So any attempt made by a property owner, they're not gonna be affected. It's the people who are consciously not either scheduling or consciously scheduling and then the homeowner's not showing up. So what we're looking for is that third and final notice, just having a conversation with City Council, letting them know that that's what we're planning on doing. What will happen if somebody is on this list is they'll have the opportunity until about, what is it Cory? Is it the twenty-first of October? To schedule a meeting or schedule their swap out, after that, they get on the list of having their water shut off. Now, we might run into some problems with some of the infrastructure that we have, with some of the curb stops, things like that, but we hope that putting some pressure and authorizing this will get that, those last few customers to schedule their swap out. So what we're looking for, so I'll entertain any questions, but what we're looking for is just a motion authorizing us to send this out and try to get this project wrapped up by November first.
How many of the three hundred plus are landlord-tenant type situations? And does the letters go both to the tenants as well as landlords of the rental properties?
Cory, I mean, could you touch on how we handle rental properties?
I believe the intent is that we send those to the landlords. So it's an understanding that we want to be, you know, and we do work close to a Sally up in Billy to understand that process and similar with businesses, there is a little bit of a challenge there. I can't speak to the number, certainly that our rental properties are of that landlord tenant nature, but my intent is to get with the folks that have the authority to allow us access and to coordinate that work.
Well, I ask this because quite frankly, I think there might be some situations where we have some substitute landowners here that may not care one way or the other as to whether or not the water gets shut off under tenants or not.
That is a concern. One thing that we've floated out, because right now the policy says that they'll receive notice, a door hanger of some sort, when the water's shut off. We were talking about this before the meeting to try and get something out, say, well, get a list from M and E, the contractor, on Sunday. We could possibly try to get out, depending on how many there are, logistically, it might be difficult to actually hang door hangers before they're water is shut off legally, we're not required to, they've received adequate notice. But what we could do is look at these, because that is a concern. There could be rental properties where a letter is going to a landlord and the landlord's disregarding it, and then all of a sudden the tenant's gonna lose their water and wonder what's going on. If we at least get a door hanger of some sort on the properties, the tenant can call the city and say, hey, we're, I'm a tenant, I don't know anything about this, so. I don't know if that would be a good solution to this, but, you know, it, logistically, it might be difficult depending on how many are left on that Tuesday before we want to shut off. And we could go off on a tiered system where we won't shut off until we hang something the day before and then the next day we're out there. So that's an option. I'd be interested to hear the input from City Council.
Well, first, first, how do you know if a customer has tried to contact? And you know where I'm at with this, because it took two weeks, two contacts, twice, with no phone call for another two weeks after I called. One week and then waited and then called, and then two weeks later I got a phone call. And then even then, I scheduled, and they didn't show up for my properties to do it when they were supposed to. They didn't know anything about it that I were in the field. Now, I, probably an isolated incident on my own end with this, but I'm, I want to make sure that we're not, that we're not jumping at the idea that somebody didn't call and they haven't, you know, there's been no phone call back. How do you know whether or not somebody's called?
So if there's record of it, obviously if they did and they recorded, there will be record of that, that they've been attempting. What we're hoping is that these letters are queued up, ready to go out tomorrow morning. So we hope that it gives them adequate time, it's roughly five business days, to say, hey, I got this letter in the mail, I've been trying to get ahold, then they're all of a sudden, then they're on the list of, we're not gonna disconnect your water. If we don't hear anything back, we hope that we get an influx of people calling this week after they get the letter and say, hey, you know, I want to get this scheduled, I really want to get this done, I don't want my water shut off. So we hope that these three hundred will go down to maybe fifty or less. But that is a concern, that's a concern of mine, that if somebody attempted to call and it wasn't recorded, and then all of a sudden they're getting a letter, we hope the letter gives them enough time to respond to the city, to say, to try and schedule something through ourself. You know, the first line of defense is call M and E and schedule it. If that doesn't work, we have a direct line to our admin assistant upstairs. So we hope the letter is enough time, it gives them five business days to respond.
Okay, and in a situation where this is a mandatory situation, and I hate bringing it around in this direction, but are the flyers that are going out both in English and in Spanish?
I don't know. No, I don't think so. I'd say no, but that might be a good idea.
Yeah, considering the fact that you're making this mandatory, I have no idea why people wouldn't be responding, but that might be one of those bases you might want to touch.
I think that's a good idea. We can, you know, I don't know if it's one sided there, we can put one side in English, one side in Spanish.
Well, you said the letters are already queued up, ready to go, so I'm guessing we're gonna probably look at a delay then on this timeline to get the Spanish version done?
No, I wouldn't think so. That would be a request to engineering, we could get that figured out. So, and we have, you know, individuals on staff that can interpret these things too, and we can maybe do it in-house too, so.
I have a concern about the time. You're not really talking five business days here. This is next Monday. If a letter were mailed tomorrow, assuming you even got there on Wednesday, you're down to two and a half days. It strikes me this is too aggressive at this point, and I would suggest it should be something like the twenty-eighth. I don't want to delay this thing ridiculously, but you gotta give people notice, you can't just assume. I travel sometimes for a day or two, I come back and there's this thing in my mailbox on Friday afternoon. I mean, it isn't, doesn't seem fair, quite frankly.
Is there anything else for Kuro?
Well, I can address that, and that was a concern that was, that was communicated to Legal Council. They've received two notices prior to this. You know, the five business days was just my poor math on how many days between now and then. But it's all about what City Council feels comfortable with. I don't know if Cory can, if there's any timeline things that we need to worry about here.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to a couple things if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, one thing, just to address, Councilmember Fabulous's concern, so we've made an improvement on the scheduling. Jasper spoke right, is that the first request is to call M and E still, or work through the appointee, the online appointee calendar. Understanding we've had some challenges with confirmation appointments being AM and PMs, had some challenges with the appointee and the eight hundred number. We are now listing city number upstairs, City Hall. We have not done that in previous correspondence, so. Our hope is that you would try to make an appointment, and if it's been unsuccessful for whatever reason, your next line would, with the direct printing of the City Hall number, you would call. And the gals upstairs now have access to the appointee calendar, so they can work through a scheduling thing as well as validating the schedule. So that's an improvement that we made, bringing city staff in to try to help this be more successful and a little bit more transparency there than just calling M and E and hoping to hear from them as they see it. So it kind of brings us into the mix as a, you know, a direct party. To speak to the schedule, the math is actually correct. The intent is, is that the letter will speak to, we've delayed appointments right now, you're unable to make appointments. That restarts on October twenty-first. And the intent is, is that if you make an appointment between October twenty-first and the first, you will not have your water shut off. You're showing intent to have this project move forward. The twenty-first is when we were reopening those installations, but we are not turning water off until the twenty-third. And the letter will speak to that, so if it does go out, say, Wednesday, or receives Wednesday, goes in the mail tomorrow, we're not turning it off until the twenty-third, so we're trying to give us close to that weak window. But again, remember, so if you say, you know, Councilmember Krogan's, you know, response, you came home, say, on the twenty-first on Monday, and you have this letter in your inbox. If you make an appointment out to the first, your water will not be turned off on the twenty-third, you're showing intent. These are, the threat of the turn off the water and the acting of turn off the water are those folks that are showing no acknowledgement of the project process. They're not making any intent to schedule, no response. Those are folks who are hoping, that we're hoping to incentivize a little bit to move forward with us on this, so.
With the exception of, you just had two scenarios that were brought up. One, you don't even know, we don't have a number as to how many are rental and rental properties. We don't know what that number is, as to how many the property owner is getting, and the renty doesn't know. And two, we don't know whether or not people understand what it is because it hasn't been going out in a language that they might be able to understand. Those are two scenarios that we just thought of in a matter of moments, that I see that, and I look at a timeline, we're talking three hundred people. You know. I'm the one uncomfortable pushing that fast forward, when I, we have two scenarios that just came up.
I have questions, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please, Council.
Are we, are we running some kind of contractual thing with our installer, that we have a rush? Do we have a timeline where we have to do certain things by a certain date that is driving some of this?
Yeah, we are. So in the contract, M and E only has until November first to do this. So that's the contractual one, and that's why in there it says, if you don't schedule it before November first, it's on, it'll be a cost to the homeowner to have it installed. Again, this is only for people that blatantly disregard all the notices.
Councilmember Sol.
So my understanding is right, that they're no longer taking appointments at this time, until the twenty-first?
Yes, yes, correct.
So they're not even setting up appointments at this time?
They're not setting them up, now they're taking notes of who it'll be. So there's gotta be some breaks within the timeline. So on the twenty-first, we'll start getting appointments again. So the admin staff upstairs has lists of people. It's just, it's an M and E thing on their scheduling software that they say, we're not taking any appointments right now.
But we're gonna rush to make sure that they follow within the contract by November first. I mean, I'm extremely uncomfortable with this, because I think if people, I mean, there's families that take vacations, you could leave on a Thursday, you're not gonna receive this letter till Thursday and not come back until next week. You have two days to make that appointment.
M and E, M and S, whatever the things are called for school.
This is the third letter that they will receive, so.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But with the M and E weekend, it's, and other council members have brought up the fact that it's, we've only distributed it in English. There is potential that these people aren't understanding what that letter means.
Well, if I may, what would you feel comfortable with? What would be a proposed timeline, add a couple weeks to this?
I think that, to Councilmember Krogan's point, I think that if we could realistically think that the letters are gonna be sent out tomorrow, received on Wednesday, that would be, what, the fifteenth? I would think that if we have a week, that would, you know, maybe bring it to the twenty-second.
May the sixteenth.
They give them sixteen.
Sixteen, so the twenty-third?
Sixteen, seventeen.
That would give, that would give a full week. Would that be acceptable? It's gonna maybe push back the timeline a little bit on the M and E side, but I'm sure that our legal deputies can come up with something or amend the contract.
Yeah, there's a number of things. I mean, Jasper has corrected, that we have a contractual obligation or a contractual deadline with this. We also have another phase of installs to begin, electric meters yet.
Exactly.
We have a season change here that makes operating curb stops and some of those things, not that I'm wishing for winter, but, you know, there's a number of things that we're considering on this. It's not meant to so much as rush the process as to have some enforcement and some response, because, you know, there's gonna be notably those exceptions where maybe folks weren't interpreting, or, you know, maybe we failed to get the notice to the right person. But there's notably a large quantity that are just, that are just not, you know, not participating.
Well, I would think that with the number of people that we have on the delinquent accounts that we talked about earlier, I think it'd be pretty easy to go ahead and cross-reference that list with those that haven't taken it upon the time to go ahead and respond to the first, second, and now third notices. And most likely, that's part of the, on average, nine hundred dollars that's owed to the city by these individuals. So those that make an attempt to go ahead and try to do it the right way, I think that we'll be able to take care of that no problem. Those that don't, shut it up.
So from what I'm hearing, I'll try to interpret what I think we should, a timeline we can do, okay? We'll look at doing like a Spanish translation of the actual third notice letter. We're looking at possibly, I'll plug in one number, the one number the city staff begins water shut off. That's the date I'll focus on. Instead of it being on the twenty-third, if we started that on the thirtieth, a week later, the letters would still go out probably tomorrow or the next day. There would be substantial notice, I would, I feel. That would be about two weeks' notice. And basically, just redo the schedule with that additional week in there. It's eventually, we're gonna have to do this, there's gonna be holdouts, so eventually we're gonna do it. It's just feeling comfortable. I want to be conscious of both the contractual obligations, which, you know, we can work through. But we also need to, we also have a bunch of other timelines related to the utility billing software and, as Cory alluded, the electric meter install. So, it, and you can't shut water off on a Friday, so you can't go just like on the first. So if it wouldn't be the thirtieth, it would have to be the sixth of November, but then we're getting really delaying it quite a bit. Open to input.
Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Sol, if you have something.
Well, I just want to piggyback to my original statement. I like what you're saying now. I would have been more open to this timeline had they not shut it essentially from yesterday until next Monday. I don't understand that weekend. If they have a contractual obligation to serve, essentially serve us until November first, have this done by November first, why are we taking a week off when you have three hundred meters open, so you're not even taking appointments?
The balancing of the books, if I understood correctly.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. It gets even more fun. Look at the letter. Under the header, your water will be shut off beginning by October twenty-third. Should you fail to schedule an appointment to replace your meter prior to Monday, you know, October twenty-first, well, you can't. You can't do it prior to Monday twenty-first. You just said they're not open. There's something wrong here, folks.
We need to make some tweaks to the letter.
Yeah. This would have been better at the very beginning of this month.
I agree. I mean, it's, we hope we get as many people scheduled as we can, and with some of the changes that we've made, the, it's increased quite a bit. We picked up a lot of, a lot of individuals. But yeah, so, looking for direction on how to proceed. We can, I think we can tweak the language of the letter itself, and I don't, I don't know the ins and outs. Maybe Cory can add why, why they're stopping, why they've stopped, and why they're gonna start on the last day that they can possibly install. So do you know, do you know the ins and outs of that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor had it correct. It's a balance of the books. The appointments have dropped off pretty substantially, to be honest with you. I mean, just a handful a day, so, you know, the installer that has, you know, has some challenges with staffing and what that looks like. I'm not saying this is the easiest decision, this project certainly hasn't been the easiest project, but we just feel like we're at a decision point here to be successful, you know, to try to be cognizant in the season. So I'm open to some schedule changes, but this is much as a, as a dialogue, as much as us directing you, you know, how to proceed, we're at a challenge here where we have some remaining accounts that we haven't been able to switch meters out, and we need a, we need a kind of a final enforcement piece here, we believe, to be successful, as successful as we can, because three hundred and stuff a lot of meters. So that's honestly where we're at, but. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Krogan.
Let me see, Kass, what we have to say in the letter is you can't, you can't even get an appointment until the twenty-first. And therefore, we're gonna give you until a certain date. I don't particularly care if it's the twenty-eighth, the thirty-ninth, thirtieth, let's pick thirtieth. Give them from the twenty-first to the thirtieth to make their appointment. That's, you can't have them make appointments when they're not able to make an appointment. That's the vendor's issue, not ours.
Well, right now, the calendar would be open from October twenty-first to November first, right?
And it's, it's an odd thing. I want you to take time out of your day to try to get a schedule. We're going to count the idea that you've called, and then we're not going to shut your water off just because you called, but you can't set up an appointment. Call back again, then we'll set up an appointment.
Well, I think we have to go ahead and look at the intent of this. First off, we're talking about two letters already going out to these individuals, this being the third letter. I think we have to go ahead and be mindful of the fact that there are gonna be some exceptions to anything. There's no such thing as a hundred percent of anything. So I think that if we logic tree this thing out such a way where staff has the ability to go ahead and say, you know, they received letter one, they received letter two, they received letter three, they have not called. they've received letter one, they've received letter two, they've received letter three, they have not called back, we've sent letters to both the landlord and to the tenants, and I'm guessing that the majority of these are renter, tenant, re- renter, landowner type situations, that we're gonna have to address that on a one-by-one type of situation. That's just, that's just my thought, because we certainly don't wanna go ahead and just take it upon ourselves to shut off water for somebody that has a valid excuse. But I'm guessing that's not gonna be a whole lot of those people. I think that if we do this right, I think you're right, City Administrator Crew, I think that number's gonna dwindle considerably from the three hundred down to twenty-five to fifty people. And then I think that's a lot more manageable to handle than where we're currently at. And I think that what our city engineer says about the three hundred right now and the reason why we have the week off, we're not getting any appointments. These three hundred people that are outstanding are not making appointments, so why are we gonna book time and pay this company to go ahead and be available for installs if no one's signing up? So, I think that that, not only that, but also to balance the books. Make sure that city staff knows who these people are according to the M and E schedule. So, what do you guys think?
Well, I still go back to my point, though, that just 'cause you aren't having staff here to install them this week, why are we not allowed to make appointments? I don't understand that. It's, it's online, it's a person on the other end of the phone, it's city staff, whatever it may be, why are we closing that for a week and then opening it up for a day, and then the next day we're starting water off? I don't understand that.
So, let me just work through this a little bit with Corey in real time. So, the, the individuals right now, they can call in, right? Even though the, the appointments are open, they can call and they can make an appointment, but they can't make it for, until after October twenty-first.
Okay.
So, we can't, they're not, they're not here, they're not in town, they're not able to do it. So, they can call in and they can say, "I want an appointment," and you say, "You can, you can get an appointment, it has to be after October twenty-first." So, it, maybe that's more, maybe I was, I don't think it was clear, so I apologize for that. But they can, they can call, it's not like they call and they say, "Oh, call back in, in five days." If we get those people on the phone, we're scheduling them, I mean, no matter what.
You're booking them.
Yeah, and honestly, like, Corey and basically everybody else that's at the front desk is, anybody that walks in, "Hey, did you get your, your meters scheduled and swapped out?" You know, so, I think that the, the opportunity's there to get on the schedule, it's just M and E won't be here to install the meters. So, um, you know, they just need to get something scheduled between the twenty-first and November first. And then, and then it's good, it's just nobody's here to do it right now.
Mr. Mayor, again, I just pointed out the letter just in sloppy language. When it says, "If you fail to schedule an appointment prior to Monday the twenty-first," it looks like that's about scheduling an appointment, not about having an appointment.
Yeah.
So, that's part of what set us off on a rabbit trip.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Um, I, I would suggest that we have the motion up there, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd move we make the date, instead of the twenty-first, change it to the twenty-eighth, and that we very clearly state in the motion that the on, the on and off fee is fifty dollars. It's not in the motion, it's up above, but it should be part of the motion. So, I'll say, I'll say it again. The motion is, as you say, see it on the screen, we changed the date in the letter to the twenty-eighth to make an appointment, and the fee be stated at fifty to turn on, fifty to turn, fifty to turn off, fifty to turn at that time. Effectively, it's a hundred bucks. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kirby.
And also, just also to keep in mind that we also wanna give you a little bit of latitude to have a little consideration, so, and, and we trust your judgment, I think I do, as everybody.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I like what you had to say, um, Mr. Croppman, but I, I, I didn't press that, um, we proceed ahead with what you suggested, or we'll vote on it, but, um, let's just give, um, Administrator Crew a little bit of latitude, so he can use good judgment.
Councilmember, or City Administrator Crew.
So, just, I'll, I'll reiterate this, we'll be extremely forgiving i- if anybody contacts us, right? Like, so, we want, we, we, there, we know there are customers out there that don't, are just totally blowing this off, and that's to address those. But, so just to clarify the motion, what we wanna do is essentially add one week, is that what the intent is? To the, to the schedule, allowing people to, basically, the, the notice will be sent out either tomorrow or the next day with us. Do we wanna have a Spanish version, or you think that should be part of it, part of the motion if we want? Um, and then installation appointments will begin on the twenty-first, but they'll have until the twenty-eighth for their water to be, before their water's shut off. Is that what we're looking at, on Monday?
They have to have an appointment by Monday the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
For the business.
And then the water would be then shut off on the thirtieth of... October, is that correct? I believe I'm looking at a calendar right now.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
So, instead of shutting the water off on the twenty-third, we would just extend it out one week?
That's a book. Councilmember Sullivan.
Do we also have to add something in the motion in regards to the fifty-dollar per month manual read?
What was that now?
Do we have to include something about the fifty-dollar per month manual read if the water can't be shut off? It's the last, last line of this. Not up there. Going back here.
Yeah, we probably should. I think we're gonna need to add that language.
Is that sort of what it sounds like?
We're negotiating the motion. We haven't had a second, by the way.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm amenable to the twenty-eighth, shutting it off by the thirtieth, which is not part of the motion. Um, the fee to turn it on or off rather and on each is fifty, and also the manual read would be fifty. I don't know if I want to include the Spanish translation, but I think we probably should, based on the conversation. It's gonna, if you have to do it, you might as well do it for all of them, not select it, so. If I were Stacy right now, I wouldn't be a happy note taker.
Do you have a, you have a pretty good handle on this, Director Lawrence?
I got it.
Okay, good. So, we have, we have a motion, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, and very glad that we're all able to work this out. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, move on to light item seven, Echo, which is Recreation Parks Advisory Committee, R-PAC Appointment. City Administrator Crew.
Mayor Hay, members of City Council, uh, as you are aware, we had two resignations, I believe, you are aware, um, on R-PAC. With the change of the bylaws, there is only one vacant seat available. Um, it, it worked out in the sense that this transition will kinda occur organically. Uh, we do have one application on record, that is, uh, the application that's been provided to you in the packet. It's, uh, Chris Wilkie. Uh, this seat would end, uh, have a term that would end on, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. As a note, Chris's, uh, mother, Robyn, is also on R-PAC. So, uh, what we're looking for is City Council to evaluate the application. If, if, if City Council feels fit, a motion, uh, to accept Chris Wilkie, uh, to fill that vacancy would be appropriate.
Entertain that motion for Chris Wilkie to fill the position on R-PAC?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think he's gonna be a great person for this, uh, he's already well involved.
Yeah, I would echo that as well, especially with his participation with the Hockey Association.
The only downside is, is that we're, um, going to be missing a youth element, uh, on R-PAC that I really wish was going to continue on there after Ethan left. We were hoping to maybe get back somebody from the high school, from the high school age group, because they know a lot about what they would like to do in parks and trails.
Well, that being said, we do have an opening coming up, twelve-thirty-one, twenty-nineteen, so I would highly encourage that we try to go ahead and solicit somebody from the high school community to perhaps apply, because we'll be looking to fill that position in January of twenty-twenty. Uh, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried, and I'd also like to make note that we should also have Councilmember John Fabels listed as an ex officio for the R-PAC, because that's not on our chart. We now move on to light item seven, Foxtrot, Parks and Recreation Tobacco-Free Policy. City Administrator Crew.
Mayor Hay, uh, members of City Council, uh, this policy is something that a lot of communities, uh, pass throughout the, the United States, actually. Uh, this has been to R-PAC, it's looked at what, what this policy says. Uh, R-PAC has recommended that City Council adopt it. Essentially, it's saying that in our parks and open spaces, all of those will be tobacco-free. Um, one question that I've received is, uh, sidewalks and trails, they're not part of this, it's just those open spaces, parks, that, that are, um, tobacco-free. So, this isn't an ordinance, this is a policy, uh, there really is no teeth to enforce it, other than to say, "We have this policy, uh, we receive free signs that we can post at the facilities," um, if, if this is passed. Uh, but really, it's, it's kind of a courtesy situation that, um, we just ask that people don't smoke, uh, in city parks in open spaces.
Councilmember Fabels.
It's my understanding that it is actually, um, a law situation, because all of our city property is tobacco-free. And those parks are covered underneath that as well, if I'm not mistaken. That was a discussion that we had at R-PAC, and that, um, and that makes it difficult as far as the enforcement thing goes, but we can get the signs and stuff like that. Um, TJ seemed to think that he was gonna have no problem getting us signs for that, or using it as a reminder of our, uh, tobacco law on city property already. If I, if I'm not mistaken, this was our discussion.
Yeah, uh, I'll have to look into it, um, for sure, to see if it is in our city code that, that is the case. If, if TJ looked into it and said that to our back, that's probably the case. It is, like you said, difficult to enforce. So, I'll do some more research on that, I guess that, that doesn't necessarily relate to this, this is kind of a, um, you know, policy to adopt this, but I, I'll do some more research to see once, if we have an ordinance. If that is something that we don't have, it might be something we can look into. But, um, I'll definitely look into it, get back to you guys.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion then for the adoption of this policy.
So moved.
Tobacco-free parks policy, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the dock, a seven golf, the turkey trot, in-kind donation, City Administrator Crew.
Mayor Hay, sorry, Mayor Hay, members of City Council, uh, before you, is a request that I received from Dave Johnson, who's on, uh, a member of the Lusor Rotary Club. Uh, what we have is a request, uh, for some services for a turkey trot event that's held on Thanksgiving Day. The request will be to prepare the streets for the event, that entails some street sweeping, which we generally do already. Uh, we'll just make sure that area is, is clean for cleanup debris. Uh, traffic controls, uh, the fire department involves themselves in this on a volunteer basis. Uh, they, they utilize the community center to set up tables for dispersing, uh, tee, uh, t-shirts and other, um, specific things for the event. Uh, there's requests for staff personnel to be there to help with some of the setup takedown. Um, the cost estimated internally is under five hundred dollars. Uh, we've, we've generally done this in the past. Um, officially, we've approved this last year, um, the previous years, we've, we've just done it. So, what you have before you is a request from the Lusor Rotary Club for assistance and in-kind considerations related to the Lusor Rotary Club turkey trot.
And to be clear, we, the reason why we're doing this is because we wanna make sure that we can account for for the assets that are being utilized for product, uh, situations like this, that's why we made the policy last year. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing nine, I will entertain a motion to go ahead and approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that it falls in line with the comp plan. The entire purpose between these types of things is to keep a relationship between the city and the service clubs, and it's in-kind because they most definitely contribute back to the community.
That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Last item on our dock, a seven hotel, which is the surplus property declaration that was moved from our consented job, City Administrator Crew.
Mayor Hay, members of City Council, uh, before you, this item, the only thing that's changed is a two thousand four Crown Victoria has been added to the list, this was the, uh, transport vehicle for the fire department. Um, it was originally, it was originally a police car that was then sold to the fire department, and then now they're, they're surplusing it back. So, those money, that money, any money generated for this will go back into the, the fire department fund. Um, other than that, there's some items, uh, that have been listed that have been declared surplus by city staff, um, in the processes. Uh, there'd be a motion approving the list of items and declare them surplus property, and the, the last time we did this, what we did is we had a lot, it went on a K-bid, it went really well, um, I thought, and it generated more income, or more revenue than what we expected for some of our items. So, uh, we'll add this to the list, uh, likely using the same vendor.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the list of items and declare them surplus property.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Councilmember Sullivan, I want you to go ahead and kick us off for comments, reports, items of appreciation.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Nothing for you? Hey, let's have a, get my thing ready to go here, and take my notes. Councilmember Fabels. You know what, I think I'm gonna come back to you if you, if that's okay with you.
No, okay.
I, I, I know you've got some lengthy things. Councilmember Cropp.
Nothing, sir.
You do? I don't think so. I hope not.
It's about ten minutes' worth. Councilmember Kirby.
I have nothing to name here.
Boy, you guys haven't done anything the last few weeks, huh? Well, Councilmember Huntington.
Well, I got some things.
Oh, good.
I'll make a chart, 'cause I wanna get out here.
Five minutes' worth?
Sure.
Okay.
Or less. Uh, HRA meeting Wednesday, four P.M. at Hillside Court, it's always open in public, anybody can come. Uh, I wanted a shout-out to Chris Wilkie for making our great sign back here of Lusor here. And then lastly, Thursday, I'm the Vice President of the United Fund, and we have our kickoff at, uh, Lusor Henderson High School Commons between six and seven, six and seven P.M. And it's open in public, of course, and like, got a lot of people down there, so, that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fabels.
I don't know what you're thinking, I'm not that much, I, I have, uh, Murph Park, um, we did have a, a Murph Park meeting prior to the, this meeting, and before, or after the last. So, in that, um, uh, we continued on with the twenty-five percent rate that we were, that we were at. So, essentially, we dropped twenty-five percent, then waited a year, raised it to twenty percent. That still wasn't making great, so we got raised to twenty-five percent. Um, there's, uh, we went through a month without major massive repairs, although, uh, in the budget discussions, the reality is, is that, uh, is that rates are gonna have to change for, for that. Now, that doesn't mean that that's a major aspect to the citizens of, of Lusor, uh, Jasper's, and the, and the staff have done a good job anticipating. The reality is, is that staff already knows this, and the commission has had a hard time getting to the realization of what it really costs on this facility and, and keep up with the, with the problems. So, I, I don't see an issue, uh, for, uh, for the rates for the citizens. Um, Jasper can probably speak to that one a little bit better, but that's pretty much where we're at, as far as Murph Park goes.
Okay, thank you. Did you wanna talk about the... One subject that, uh...
And that was, that was Jasper's staff, uh, what was that? Remind me, will you please?
Vandal.
Oh, all right, I was kinda hoping to have some numbers on, on what the vandalism, uh, problems have, uh, are costing the community. And I'd thrown a number out there on the idea of, you know, are, are we looking at six thousand dollars worth of, uh, worth of vandalism? And, um, it was, said that we're, we're probably looking at a bit more than what that is. You know, when we start looking at these things that are going on in the community, I, I would really... I, I would really like it for people to start relating to what a sidewalk costs. You know, if I've got ten thousand dollars worth of damage going on in, in our town due to fixing and cleaning up and painting and replacing from somebody just not caring about the things that the rest of, of the town are paying for, then it's taking away one-fourth of a project from us. It's taking away a fourth of a block of sidewalk. Um, for all of these different things that we wind up having to pay for that are not budgeted for, um, it's, it's becoming bad business. We turn around, we start looking at the prices of some of these things, and it's starting to really add up. Um, having city staff prepare things for meetings, and then the meetings don't happen because we don't have a quorum, well, it's a waste of city funds, and that takes away from a block of sidewalks. You know, when we have members that don't show up for things, it's taking away from funds that could've gone. You know, if you're not gonna be involved, don't be involved. If you're gonna be involved, then be wholeheartedly involved, and if you're gonna destroy something, destroy something that's your own, and leave everybody else's alone.
Thank you. And I'd like to go ahead and piggyback on that as well, I'd say this for the record. If you see something out there, citizens, say something. We need to find out who these individuals are that are causing the damage, so please keep your eyes open, and, uh, this individual or individuals will be dealt with, with everything that the city of Lusso has available to it. Uh, Director Lawrence, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Engineer Benfany, anything more? City Administrator Crew.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Personnel budget, we have a couple meetings scheduled, one for Wednesday the sixteenth, and another one for Wednesday the thirtieth, and what we're gonna be really diving into are enterprise budgets, rates, things like that, so, um, enterprise funds are a little bit different than the general fund, really, we have a need, as Johnny kinda discussed with Murph Park, we have the same thing for all of our other, uh, funds that we have, there's needs, there's maintenance that we need to do, a lot of those are costs that we really have no control over, um, and those are reflected in the rates. Um, so we've done a lot of work internally, uh, we, we have different ways that we're looking at it, we have the finance director and the public services director and myself are all looking at these things, trying to make sure we keep rates as low as we possibly can while still being able to maintain the level of service and the reliable service that we have in, in all of these departments. So, we're gonna be kicking that off, uh, with, with personnel budget on Wednesday, so that'll be a good thing. Um, that's all I have.
Entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Charles, that are here.